I'm going to call the Order of the State Councilman for May the fourteenth. We do not have a closed session at this time. If you please rise and join us in the pledge.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's his name? Counselor Agency Authority Member Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Agency Authority Member Torres?
Here.
Counselor Agency Authority Member Van?
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chair Percy Warren?
Here.
And Mayor Chairman Shoper?
We'll move on to special presentations and awards. The first one we have is for National Public Works Week in the City of Stanton. Caesar, will you be the sayings?
Hansol.
We are declaring National Public Works Week for May nineteen to May twenty fifth this year. I'm not gonna read all of our asses, but what I will read is the fact that we have an outstanding public works department. We're few but many. It reminds me of the little engine that thought it could moon up that hill. Because no matter how our tasks keep piling up and they pile up, we're always able to get caught up and serve the public. Our real compliment is if you drive through Orange County and you look at the streets, you'll find that most of our archerials, including our neighborhoods, have some of the best streets in Orange County. That's because of the scheduling that you've been able to do that. A lot of people don't understand when you have a six-man crew, forty thousand people, and even though it's three and a half square miles, it's quite a job. I can't even remember the linear feet of a road ring, but we're responsible to keep the streets swept, make sure all the terms are red, and get all our signage up so that people know what to do. So on behalf of our entire city, and by city staff, and our council, Caesar, if you let each of the members of your department know how much we really appreciate the job that they do on a daily basis. And you know, the problem with that is just about the time you get cleaned up, you're back out there doing the same thing over again. And I admire that. It's a prince Percy Rose on your words.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and City Council. We really appreciate all that the team does as well. Appreciate all the support for the public works department. Thank you.
Mr. Hansol, you.
Mr. Hansol?
Don't hide back there. Come on up. Okay, introduce yourself and tell us all about your experience.
Hi, my name is Hansol Yu. I am the Associate Engineer for the City of Stanton. I've been here for almost two and a half years and I'd like to say our six-man crew really does do it all. And it's on the ground and we make sure that our city is functioning.
Thank you. I would please introduce yourself. Your party will give you your proclamation so that you can hang it up on the wall in the yard. Let's go. Thanks so much. David. David. I don't need to stay down here until this one. This is a proclamation for drowning prevention awareness for this summer. And we all know we're at Great Hall, our OCFA place in this job. Actually, the foundation, the OCFA, our association of foundation, puts a lot of time and energy in working with the OCFA so that we get the word out to every family in Orange County about how dangerous it is of this water. And we have these certain points that we get out, and we have been very successful in our community outreach. So this particular proclamation just points that out at this time. And the Orange County Party, the Orange County Party will be taking an opportunity to increase this awareness during this month. Well, I'd say it's more than a month, it's from May through August, okay? Always watch the water, ever swim alone, and encourage U.S. citizens to be watchful and become partners of the goodness by increasing their knowledge and your family's knowledge of drowning prevention. Therefore, with the OCFA and my fellow councilmembers, we are making this drowning prevention awareness on proclamation.
Hello, good evening. My name is Chris Spezia. I'm a fire captain with Orange County Fire Authority. I'd like to thank the mayor, council members, city staff, and our guests that are attendance here. Thank you for your partnership in this recognition of the importance of drowning safety and this proclamation. Drowning is a preventable tragedy that affects our friends, families, and communities. In the U.S., drowning is the leading cause for children under the age of four and remains a significant threat to all age groups. We often believe that drowning involves a lot of noise and splashing, but to the contrary, drowning is a silent killer. Drowning is quiet and a quick incident that can change a fun day in the water into a tragedy. In 2023 alone, in Orange County, we had a hundred and three drowning incidents, fifty-one of those being fatal. So far in 2024, we've had six total drowning incidents, four of those being fatal, involving victims over the age of thirty-five. These aren't just numbers. They're data that represents our children, parents, friends, and our community members who were cut short by a preventable tragedy. That is why with this proclamation and our continued outreach, OCFA advocates the ABCs of water safety. And as the mayor read briefly, is the A is for active adult supervision. Being attentive and active, watching children in the water, never swimming alone. Having appropriate barriers installed, proper fencing around pools to prevent unsupervised access. And C for classes, everyone should consider taking swim lessons and a CPR to help themselves get the skills necessary to prevent the drowning and respond to incidents appropriately. These are simple but important measures to help prevent tragedy. These are our best defense against preventable loss of lives. Remember, it only takes a few seconds for a drowning to occur, but with proper precautions and vigilance, we can protect our loved ones. Thank you again for this proclamation and partnership.
Adding to that, to show you what a great impact that has in Orange County, I was at the fire association meeting today. And they showed a really great tape, and I'll try to get that for all of you to see. It was a young, I think he was five or six-year-old, maybe seven. And the park truck was coming down the street and stopped to visit him. And he gave the park riders a big hug because two weeks before that, he was drowning at the house. I responded to with our team, and they were able to save him, and now he's living a very healthy life. So that's another example of what a great job you, the OCFA, does in taking care of the safety of the people in Orange County. So thank you for that, and please let that ship know how much we appreciate them helping us here in our city. All right, we're gonna move on to the consigning calendar. All these items, we take it in one motion. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to pull an item or anything that needs to be addressed? Anybody that says this corresponds?
Maybe we have no corresponding, nobody that corresponds.
Thank you. We have a first break. Percy Warren?
Hi. What?
Okay, thank you, and I will, I will go ahead and six H is what I need. We'll all go ahead.
And then we'll see with a roll call vote, Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Councilmember Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Shoper?
Yes.
And six H before your first meeting is approval of the First Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with John L. Hunan Associates to provide consulting services related to National Tornado Discharge Elimination System and PTPS and fast oils and booze program. Mr. Shoper, your questions?
Thank you. Yeah, Caesar, the reason I pulled this, I didn't quite get the answer I wanted in the quote from staff. I know that any of these things, so this example, that would have a little behind, but there were some things that we were catching up on. One of the things that I was concerned about was, I would like to see more of an itemized cost analysis. I know that we already paid almost a hundred thousand dollars for this. I assume that we're not going to be spending all that money. But I think it's important that we have an idea of what certain areas we still have to kill on, that's number one. Number two, we did start our own park program here many years ago. We were the first state in Orange County to recycle FODs. And I always would like maybe to get updates on fellow councilmembers to have an understanding of how that program works. No hurry on that, though. The only thing that, again, that I'm concerned about is to make sure that we're in compliance. I know that we are our own regulatory agency. In other words, no longer is the state doing that. Sorry, the state does always, as Calisidron does, but I know that the county is no longer a local county and local enforcement agency. So what I would like to do is just get some kind of an idea of where we are. The reason for that is, we all know, as soon as we get somewhere, how recycle, the state changes. They either put it off for another five years, or they have us do another study. So just to get a little bit of a concrete idea of what's going on. So if you get a chance to get that, I think entirely my council would like to have a little bit of that, you know, that sort of part of my. I'll go ahead and move it.
All right.
All in favor? Okay, moving on. Yeah, we're now at end of the consigning calendar, public hearings. We have none. I've been speaking, so we have none. New business, this is an introduction of the fiscal year two O G four O five proposed operating budget. Sure, yes, I do.
I'll start. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Staff would like to welcome everyone in attendance this evening to the City of Stanton Budget Workshop for the fiscal year beginning July first, point twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Tonight's workshop consists of eight sections covered by one hundred and five slides. The accompanying draft operating budget can be found online on the city's website and was included as part of the published agenda on Thursday, May ninth. After I present the workshop guidelines and goals, Finance Director Michelle Vanegan will present overviews for the overall budget, general fund, reserve fund, and successor agency. Following the overviews, the council will receive updates from each of the departments. We'll end the workshop with a discussion of decision packages for the council's consideration and direction. Next slide, please. On behalf of the entire city staff, we are pleased to present the draft fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five operating budget this evening. I would like to thank the mayor and city council for their leadership and support throughout the year for setting a course that applies the values and priorities of the community. I would also like to thank the department directors and their teams for working diligently to prepare a balanced operating budget which will form a work plan for the upcoming years supporting the implementation and realization of the council's budgeted goals and objectives. And finally, I'd like to provide a special thank you to the finance team, and especially Michelle Vanegan, Amy Massey, and Doyle Hogan for their long days and late nights working on this year's budget. The city's budget memorializes the city's capacity to effectively fund and deliver essential municipal services that contribute to the quality of life enjoyed by residents and citizens. The city's budget serves as a financial and policy plan that guides decisions made during each fiscal year and is the single most important document we have for determining the future of the city. In reviewing our performance over the past year and looking forward to the goals of the coming year, the budget provides insight into the opportunities and challenges we face. The timeline of steps after tonight's meeting is we'll be presenting the proposed budget to the council and the community here. We'll also be using this evening as an opportunity to gather feedback and comments. We'll review decision packages, and hopefully the council will provide directions to staff. We will then prepare the budget for final discussion, comments, and any questions are encouraged throughout the workshop. And we will take a break about halfway through, but if anybody needs to leave their room, the restrooms for the public are outside. And to my right, there's food and beverages in the back, so please help yourself throughout the meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to Finance Director Michelle Vanegan.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna start with the first couple of slides and just an overall overview of our budget. So in developing our budget, staff had to consider a number of factors. One of them is what economists are saying. Our economy is gonna look like just in, not just the state, but in our local Orange County area. And, you know, saying what the economy's gonna look like is like in a crystal ball, and every economist has a different answer. But most of them seem to think that the economy in the state and in our Orange County area is going to be pretty flat next year with minimal to no growth. So that was our baseline. In addition, staff relies on forecasts provided by industry experts that we contracted to develop our overall revenue picture. So as a result, the revenues included in our budget are very conservative. And also, when determining tonight's proposed expenditures, we, our goal was to maintain the city's current core service levels while also taking input from departments regarding their needs to maintain and/or improve their department's operations, whether that was addressing deferred maintenance areas, providing additional technology improvements. And as tonight's proposed budget was developed, the city council and the public will notice, especially when the proposed capital improvement program is presented by public or state or city, that staff has made a concerted effort to identify and utilize grant opportunities whenever possible. So going to these little two boxes over here, the finance department accounts for all city operations in approximately thirty-five separate funds. So total revenues estimated next fiscal year is approximately forty-six point seven million for all thirty-five funds, which is more than the approximately forty-five point nine million for all city funds and expenditures. The takeaway from those two boxes is our estimated revenues are more than our estimated expenditures. And that's a good thing. Attachment A to the staff report includes a proposed revenue and expenditures for all thirty-five of these funds, both at the individual fund level and at the department level. And the department level is broken out even further at each department's division level, and that division is at the account level. So depending on how you like to see the budget, it can go as high level or as very detailed as the city council or the public would like to see. However, the remainder of this budget is going to focus on the city's general fund only. That represents eighty percent of the citywide expenditure budget for next year. Our general fund is our primary operating fund. It's where most of our discretionary revenues are budgeted. It funds most of the day-to-day services that the city delivers. In hand, when we talk about the city's reserve fund, the majority of the reserves that we talk about are kept in our general fund for discretion for the council to appropriate when needed. The bottom line picture is our proposed budget for next year shows that our estimated revenues are more than our estimated expenditures by one point one million. Again, revenues more than expenditures, that's always your goal, so this is the balanced budget we're bringing to you. When the city council adopted the budget for this fiscal year last June, after taking into account all the decision packages we made in last May's workshop, the adopted budget expected our revenues to exceed our expenditures by three forty-eight or eighty. Now, at the mid-year, as we always do, we revise our revenues and our expenditures based on actuals to date and new information that comes to light. And you'll see, we went from this adopted overage to an adopted overage of two point nine million. It doesn't mean that finance is really bad at estimating revenues. It means that when we adjusted our revenues at the mid-year, we increased our revenue estimates by about two point one million. However, one point five million of that were one-time anomalies that happened this fiscal year. For example, about five hundred thousand of that was to increase our revenue estimate for investment income. As interest rates are very high, as of the last year or so, the city's investment portfolio has gained the benefit of that. And we have earned over a million dollars in investment revenue in the general fund last fiscal year, and we're headed towards getting very near that one million dollars in this fiscal year as well in our general fund. Of course, we're trying to prioritize and balance the general fund. We don't want to assume we're gonna earn another million dollars next year, so we're being very conservative with that number. But that was half a million dollars that we revised in twenty-three, twenty-four. Another half a million dollars of one-time anomaly revenue that's impacting fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four and making it so high are one-time developer contributions from developer agreements. Things like public benefit fees, certification fees, neighborhood preservation fees that are one-time revenues negotiated in some DAs we have, those again are not ongoing revenues. One project is paying those revenues one time at certain points as that project progresses. So we don't have those revenues projected in twenty-four, twenty-five. That makes sense. And lastly, the general fund loaned another fund to the city. Remember, I said we have thirty-five funds in our city operations. It loaned another fund to the city over nine hundred thousand dollars a few years ago for the purchase of streetlights. That general, that fund was supposed to repay the general fund over a number of years up through fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Well, that streetlight district fund has sufficient cash to pay that off earlier. So part of our revenue adjustments in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four was to pay off that interfund loan and pay the general fund earlier. And so that was five hundred thousand dollars. So that was what, those were some of the anomalies. I don't want people to freak out that, oh my gosh, our revenues are going down next year. They're not. We had some specific circumstances that happened this year. Some of the key takeaways when we get to, you're gonna see the general fund revenue projections in a number of different formats in the next few slides. Some people like to see it in a list, some people like to see it in a line, some people like to see it in a pie chart. And they're gonna see it in different ways, so each person can kind of take in and absorb that information that works best for them. But some of the highlights are what are the big factor things that are impacting our revenue projections next year? We still have, you're driving down Beach Boulevard, a lot of residential development going on, which is causing our property tax to increase in a modest number. We'll talk about assessed valuation in a couple of slides. So we have consistently, just like we did the last couple fiscal years, we're putting a five percent increase in our property tax revenues. Our sales tax and measure G revenues are increasing three and two percent. Those numbers come from HGL companies who are experts in sales tax and measure GG tax revenue projections and other revenue projections, and so our numbers come directly from them. Our cannabis revenues are never gonna see, probably, this increase again is ninety-nine percent. And that is because in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we only estimated two cannabis retail businesses to be opening. We now have all four retail businesses open. And in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we are increasing our revenue projections to incorporate some of the recent city council actions to the cannabis program. That includes expanding the cannabis business permit for our four retail businesses. They will be able to now provide delivery services, so we estimated some additional revenue related to that. And the city council recently approved an extension to the cannabis business permit for our cultivation businesses. So they, if they agree to the extension, they will be providing a portion of their annual cannabis business tax to the city. So all of that is causing our estimate to be about double of what we are expecting this fiscal year. And then some other modest increases is our utility user tax and hotel tax. CR and R revenue, that's our trash provider. The city council approved a new solid waste franchise agreement earlier this fiscal year. There is an increase in those revenues because there are some new revenue categories being provided by CR and R under the new agreement. We do have some reductions in our building planning and engineering fees of thirty-four percent. That is as expected. Development activity is very volatile. So we've had a few years of a lot of activity, especially residential. And we are expecting less activity next fiscal year. Some of this revenue was offset by expenditures, because we contract some of these services through third parties. So there will be an expenditure reduction as well. Parking citation revenue, we had a significant increase in our mid-year adjustments in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So when we did our estimate for next fiscal year, we just kind of budgeted our flatline amount. We didn't want to expect that people are gonna continue to violate our parking rules. And lastly, gas tax, reimbursement gas tax is that extra tax that people pay at the service stations. The city gets a portion of it to use for street maintenance. Depending on the amount of what public works budgets for street maintenance costs in the general fund, depends on how much we can offset from the gas tax. So this is just, again, an offset of expenditures. What is not included, if you are familiar with city operations, we've been working on a user fee study for a couple of years. So we do not have any fees increases related to the result of that study. It is merely complete, but we don't want to assume what fees will be adopted. So that is not there. That could be a future mid-year adjustment once it's approved. So this is one of the ways we're presenting the general fund revenues. And this shows the history. And this is what I was talking about. If you look at the twenty-three, twenty-four amended and the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed, it looks like it's almost the same number. It looks very flat. But if we take out the one point five million of anomalies we talked about earlier, in reality, general fund revenues are, oh my gosh, we're done, are expected to increase by four percent. It's not, wow. Trish, can you take me back? To number something. Yeah. This is another chart that lists it by each category. This is also presented in attachment A of the staff report. It has each one in a list. So you can see the revenue side by side. This is a pie chart. And you're not going to see the words or the percentages too far if you're in the audience. But I think the big picture is you don't want one piece of the pie to represent half or more of the general fund revenues. For example, some cities might have sales tax be half or property tax be half. And when you start seeing things that happened like the real estate bubble in two thousand and eight and people's properties were getting reassessed and that really impacted property tax revenue to cities. Cities who had a bigger, whose revenues were for property tax have a bigger slice of pie were really impacted. Likewise, cities who really rely on the sales tax, when people stop buying stuff, stop going to restaurants, stop buying cars, that really impacts them. So our, this is showing you how diverse the general fund revenue structure is. We do have sixty-seven of our, seven percent of our revenues coming from collectively property tax, sales tax, and our one percent transaction and use tax. But one piece isn't representing the majority. And this is something that HGL provided, our council provided to us. And I thought it would be nice for the council and the public to see. So we added this chart in. And November two thousand and sixteen is when the voters approved our one percent measure GG. So that is represented in the blue line. And our regular one percent sales tax is in the other line, that's yellow or orange. And you can see how the orange line or the yellow line has been kind of flat and gradual. And our blue line has been going, has brought this much more revenue to the city. So if not for the city council members supporting this measure and the residents for voting for it, this brought all that new revenue to the city. City of Stanton is unique according to HGL because usually the blue line is lower than the yellow line. But in our city, we don't have any, we don't have very many car dealerships. And so if you're a city resident and you buy a car outside of Stanton and you register it in Stanton, that's where the city is getting that additional one percent. So in our city, our measure GG revenue brings in more than our sales tax revenue, which is good for the general fund and good for the city and good for the residents. Here is another chart. It's going to be hard to see, but just think big picture. You're looking at colors. So this chart shows the assessed valuation of the property in the city. So you'll see that the business is going very up. The last assessed valuation that came out last August, it was about four billion dollars. So the value of secured property of the city of Stanton has increased about thirty-one percent in just the last five years. That is because of all of the residential and commercial development projects that the city council has approved. That is, and put on and have actually completed. And people are actually buying those properties. A lot of those residential properties on Beach Boulevard and throughout the city, as those properties actually get sold in the residential market, that's what brings up our assessed valuation. So that is great. But what would be, we also wanted to show you this chart. You're not going to be able to see it very well, but this is the value of, for every one dollar of property tax that the county of Orange collects. A lot of residents think that the city gets every single dollar. The city gets this red piece. This red piece is fourteen cents. So for every dollar that of property tax that you see on your property tax bill, fourteen cents of that goes to the city's general fund. Everything else goes to some other county or school district or other organization. So.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I want to make a point.
Okay.
Because that is exactly what we try to send out on how lame our budget is with the property tax money that we issue. To show you how the imbalance is, we get approximately, I believe it's nine million dollars a year in property tax money.
That is what is estimated next fiscal year.
The Savannah Unified School District, which has four schools, gets thirty million dollars a year from our property tax period. So I just wanted to show you where your money is going. It's going to, for our causes. But there is an imbalance in where the money is being shared. And again, that was done with the vote of the public. That's why they have those amounts of money. But we are doing very well, as you will see as we continue to produce. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Don't push your card now. All right, appreciate you. So that's it for the general fund revenues. Just some highlights on our general fund expenditures and the assumptions that went into it. The city's already received its proposed contract cost from the Orange County Fire Department and from the Orange County Sheriff's Department. So our Orange County Fire Department contract cost will be increasing four point five percent next fiscal year. Our Orange County Sheriff's Department cost will be increasing six point one percent next year. And as people are seeing probably their own personal and homeowners insurance in California, their insurance rates are kind of out of control right now. We do not have our insurance figures firm from the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority as of tonight's presentation. We're still expecting that in the next couple of weeks. But based on prior trends, we are estimating about a thirty-seven percent increase in our liability insurance, which includes workers' comp, property, earthquake, and general liability insurance. As far as our retirement costs, we have a modest two percent increase in our employer contribution. A lot of that is, a lot of new city employees that have come to the city over the last couple of years have been in that new PEPRA plan, which is the plan that was resulted from the California Pension Reform Act. So it is a lower-cost retirement plan. So we're starting to see over time the city's retirement costs are decreasing. And then we did, we did have double digits in our employee medical insurance and a modest increase in our dental insurance. In addition, when the city received its nine point one million of American Rescue Plan Act monies, the city council approved the funding of a certain number of limited-term staff positions for city hall. Those positions were expected to stop being funded in December of two thousand and twenty-four. Because these positions have become vacant in the past year, the city staff has decided not to build those positions. So we've actually unfunded those positions as of July one, two thousand and twenty-four. And that is one management analyst position in the administration department, a senior accounting technician position in finance, and two homeless outreach coordinator positions in the public safety department. So overall, this is our chart of our history of our general fund. And this shows that our expenditures are increasing slightly by about three percent. I do want to comment about this anomaly in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. I don't want the residents to think that we increased our general fund expenditures by nine million dollars between twenty-three and twenty-four. Last fiscal year, when the federal government was trying to balance its budget, it took a very long time to approve a budget, there was a risk that any unspent ARPA monies would be clawed back by the federal government. So the city council made a decision to fund, to spend the rest of our ARPA monies last fiscal year. And so we had a shifting of public safety costs from our general fund to our ARPA fund. This is just a chart that shows general fund revenue, general fund expenditures increasing from thirty million to thirty-one point five million. And this is a pie chart showing where does that thirty-one point five million get spent by department. Again, don't worry, you can't read the, read the words or the percentages. Just know that most of the pie chart is public safety. And that includes both the Orange County Sheriff's Department, the Orange County Fire Authority, and our own public safety department. And then the next pie chart, that's the portion is our public works department, which is all the maintenance and operations there. And that is, you know, very typical. This just shows you the comparison over the years of general fund revenues over expenditures. And you always want this revenue line that's blue to be higher than the orange line. If the orange line is higher, that means that we had to pay, use our reserves to fund those expenditures. And unless there is a decision to do a one-time project or a one-time expenditure, you never want to spend more money than what you have. In this particular fiscal year, that was a decision made by the city council to pay down its public safety pension liability, pay down six million dollars of it. So they consciously decided to spend six million dollars of general fund reserves to pay down the pension liabilities.
How much did that save us?
That saved us millions. I don't have this number.
It's about three point two, right?
I believe so. That was done in the fiscal year before I arrived. Thank you. So this shows the same thing, but it's in side-by-side bar charts. And then again, you just want the blue to be over the orange. So that is it for the proposed general fund revenues and expenditures. We're going to talk about a couple of slides on the pension, unless there's any questions on our general fund proposed budget at this time. Okay. This is for the benefit of the public, just to show you how, with a funding source of each dollar from the CalPERS pension system. So fifty-six cents of each dollar they spend comes from how much CalPERS earns on its investment portfolio. Then about eleven percent comes from, or eleven cents comes from actual employee contributions. And the other thirty-three cents comes from CalPERS employers like the city of Stanton. So with fifty-six percent of each dollar coming from the investment portfolio, this makes it very volatile when Cal, when the investment market swings and they lose money. It costs a lot more money to pension the employers on their contributions. And when it makes money, it causes our contributions to go the other way. This is just from the CalPERS website. It's just informational to show the public how much of the California economy, CalPERS members make, contribute to the Californian economy. The average, a couple of things to point out, the average pension check is approximately thirty-five hundred dollars per month. And they bring, they contribute about twenty-seven point seven billion dollars to the state economy. This is a, this is a comparison of our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three and our amended budget this year and what our UAL payments are for next year. So you will see that our UAL payment in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five is over eight hundred thousand dollars, where it's almost doubled from what our current budget is. And that is because of the investment income volatility. One year, in the year that this contribution budget was determined, CalPERS earned about twenty-one percent investment income positive that year. And then the year that this determination came about, they lost six percent on the portfolio. So you can see when CalPERS earns money or loses money from their estimate, how that impacts the amount of the unfunded actuarial liability the city is expected to pay each year. Oh, Trish, please. This just shows the trend of our, the city's unfunded actuarial liability over the years. And this on the right shows the city has four pension plans. The safety plan is not, we don't have any employees that are current active employees in it. And you will see that most of our plans are over eighty percent funded. Our tier one, those are the employees that have been here the longest, is about seventy percent funded. And in comparison, the average of all CalPERS agencies, their average funded ratio is seventy-three and a half percent. The target is to be around that eighty percent funded ratio. And you'll see that most of our plans are at that category. So the service overview of the general fund reserves, staff is not recommending any changes to the city council's reserve policy. We feel like our current reserve policy is sufficient to maintain the risk of what you might use these for. So we have a number of reserves. We have an economic uncertainty reserve with a twenty percent of general fund operating expenses. Our current balance is six point one million dollars in the proposed budget. We are increasing that to six point three million just because the reserve policy is an actual, you know, mathematic number. As expenditures go up, then our reserves do go up. It kind of makes sense. The emergency disaster contingency reserve is currently at three million in our proposed budget. We're increasing that to three point one million to maintain our target in our policy, which is ten percent of general fund operating expenditures. We have a capital reserve that's really just a flat amount. And we have five million dollars set aside in our general fund. And we have a flat amount of one million set aside in our sewer maintenance fund. These are for, to fund any unforeseen capital improvements in either the general fund or the sewer fund that weren't anticipated in the budget. The one million honestly was just an estimate that we parked there. And we do, we do expect that there will be a different number once the sewer master plan is complete and we have our sewer user fee study complete. There will probably be a different recommendation from those, one of those consultants recommending what the appropriate reserve for that fund would be. The general fund also has some reserves set aside that are fully funded for unforeseen equipment maintenance, technology. The vehicle replacement reserve is in our fleet maintenance fund. And we do have a reserve for our pension stabilization reserve. So it is fifty percent of the city's unfunded actuarial liability. As of our last audited financial statements, our unfunded actuarial, our unfunded liabilities around seven million dollars. We currently have about four million dollars set aside in an irrevocable trust. So that again is also fully funded. So this is just a chart of just the general fund reserves. So as of the end of the fiscal year for twenty-four, twenty-five, we expect to have fourteen point seven million, which is forty-seven percent of our general fund operating budget. In addition, we're expecting eighteen points two million in our unassigned fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is everything else that we have on hand in the general fund that's not designated for a Unassigned fund balance is everything else that we have on hand in the general fund that's not designated for a specific purpose. So in reality, by the end of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, staff is estimating total reserves and unassigned fund balance of thirty-two point nine million, which is a hundred and four percent of our general fund operating budget. That is, um, pretty abnormal compared to other, um, agencies. All of that to say, if there is, you know, an economic downturn, the city is well prepared. Now I'm going to hand it back to Hannah. Michelle, did you want me to do the successor agency? So in two thousand and eleven, the state of California approved the dissolution of over four hundred redevelopment agents. As a result, property tax revenues now can be used to pay. As a result, property tax revenues would now be used to pay required payments on existing bonds, other obligations, and past repayments. Although it was very sad for cities like Stanton who used the money appropriately and used it to address flooded areas within our community, the good news is we have received our last and final rocks. And so that means we are on a schedule approved by the county to close down our successor agents. So at the local level, each successor agency in the Orange County region is supervised by the county of foreign oversight board. Cities who have not received their last and final rocks, they continue to present before this board. Again, as stated, we no longer have to present before the board because we have our last and final rocks. And we can go ahead and skip to the last slide. So then a snapshot of our last and final rocks document. This is available on the city's website for anybody who's interested. We follow the schedule as approved and release payments as they've been scheduled out. Before we move on to the department accomplishments and work plans, would the council like to ask any questions at this time for the general fund revenues, work expenditures overall? So we'll now move on to section six of tonight's workshop, department accomplishments and work plan. Each department will provide a high-level overview of major noteworthy or interesting accomplishments from the current year, which were funded by the council as part of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget. For detailed information related to departmental revenues and expenditures, you can review the draft operating budget available on the city's website. So our presentation is going to not be comprehensive because that would take us past midnight. But we are picking areas that we want to highlight. And certainly if the council has any questions as we cover this, please don't hesitate to ask. Next slide please. And to kick off our departmental presentations, we will start with the administration department. And we'll turn it over at this time to our city board.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. For our twenty-three, twenty-four accomplishments this year, uh, we've successfully hosted the March twenty-twenty-four statewide primary rush activities. They usually hold their primary activities at two sites here in Stanton. We were able to facilitate that for the Orange County Bridgetowne voters. We've also completed the twenty-twenty-three fair equipment practices commission files, which are your F. Yeah, so implemented the laser fish living online records portal. So this is a new and exciting thing for Stanton in which the public has access via a link through the city's website to browse through planning permission, participation at city council, agendas, minutes, resolutions, and ordinances without reaching out to the city. That will access that portal. The next is we have responded to two hundred and thirty-plus records, public records actually plus. So it is a fifty, fifty-three percent increase. So the public's getting more engaged, they're asking more questions, and we're able to pull that for them. And then lastly, another one is we initiated the scanning of historical planning and public works engineering files. So we're currently in that process. We have about a hundred and fifty-six blocks of VR that still need to be filed and cataloged to make it a little more easier for staff to access. Currently, we go through and we pull a paper file because we make it much easier and available to public staff.
Question on that, uh, is that done by a third party or does our employees actually want to scan it?
So for this, we were able to have this be done by a third party. Uh, most of the things that we have here in-house are continuing to scan by staff. Essentially, it's such a big project, we needed to go. Our twenty-four, twenty-five work plan is to conduct an independent business record protection policy schedule. Long-boiling, um, project for me, so excited to do that done this year, next fiscal year. Planning fair for the November twenty-twenty-four general maintenance election. So that's already in progress. You should see resolution in the staff report coming shortly. And then complete the annual updates, these are those which are done every two weeks.
I'll be presenting for the rest of the divisions within administration. So for human resources, I'm not going to go over every single goal on this slide. But I'd just like to highlight a couple of items. We are very proud to take the council's direction this year and hire translation service to support our account and customer service. So we have, um, a contract that is available, whether it be a phone, email, or a scheduled appointment. We're a variety of languages. And so we're hopeful that this one for our traditional residents to feel comfortable and free to reach out for any type of assistance they might need. We're also excited, we're continually looking at how we can take advantage of technology given our small and nameless staff. So this year we successfully implemented the yoga onboard software. This is kind of a market leader in the municipal space, so we're excited to be on that family. We did administer nineteen recruitment and onboarded eighteen new employees, many of which I see in the audience tonight. So thank you all for coming. And we were very excited to host a number of employee recognition and wellness events. Our HR division is really proud of being a part of the workplace that we try to foster here in Stanton. Next slide. For next year, some of our work plan objectives are, of course, we're constantly updating policy. Some of them are legislation-driven, others are best practice-driven, and others are things that we're seeing others to do as well. So we'll be working on a number of different policy updates there. Safety programs, we work really closely with the GPIA, and they put out legally approved and reviewed programs for us to share with our employees to maintain our safety. And for our workforce, we're always working on recruitment and retention, training, and succession. For IT, our big push this year, again after the council approved using a contractor to support our IT services, has really been about standardizing and centralizing our IT services. So we don't have a number of unique one-off solutions, but we have common solutions across the city, across the province, so that if there are issues, our help desk is able to address them. Now, we're always taking advantage of those commonalities in the program, software, or application government. So we've been very happy with our IT contractor. And they've been working really well with our departments to identify their needs and figure out how to help only need but exceed their expectations. Internally, we've also been using, a lot of this time that's been freed up by IT specialists to address necessary upgrades that were put on hold for a variety of reasons, either due to lack of time or resources. And so they've really been focused on that. So we're very excited to be continuously enhancing our security. Next year, we'll continue to take the time to make sure we put our policies and processes in place, as well as continue to standardize a lot of purchases, make sure that we're using the same making model for various hardware that we're purchasing, and then making upgrades and appraisements, not only based on the usage, but also for cost efficiency purposes. So again, having this third-party IT contractor, we have a lot of the day-to-day help desk type of allow us to make more strategic decisions for IT. This is a new slide this year that we didn't share last year. I think we wanted to acknowledge, we've had a great working relationship this year with our lobbyists, towns and public affairs. They really step up and work closely with us on grant applications. We're always looking for opportunities to leverage our existing funds by combining with other funding sources. So this is just a snapshot of some of the grants that we applied for this year. So our successful grant applications, you can see we have our Orange County CEB program. So we were awarded four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for our community center renovations. Those are going to be primarily focused on ABA access in the restrooms as well as the hallways. If there's any money left over, we'll actually be moving into the room itself and looking at some enhancements we can make there. You were also awarded one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a Vision Zero action plan. So Vision Zero is a very ambitious plan that is trying to get us to zero accidents on roadways. But the main reason, that is obviously an ideal goal, I think it's going to be hard to achieve. But this is a requirement to then apply for other types of funding. So without having this plan, you're automatically ineligible to apply for other grants. So luckily there is a grant to create this plan, which will then make us eligible for other grants. We also received forty thousand dollars from the California Solar Automated Permit Processing Program, which we will be using in conjunction with a decision package the council will consider tonight. There is a state mandate that requires that all cities reuse the permit processing software system. Small, or smaller cities have until twenty-twenty-six, larger cities actually had to have that component by January. Um, again, we apply for lots and lots of grants with the help of towns and public affairs because they augment our staff abilities. Two, we were significantly disappointed not to receive, this was our second time applying for the land and water conservation fund for these Stanton Central Park tennis courts. And I highlight that here because you actually will see it in the decision package tonight. We feel like we've exhausted available alternative grant funding resources, so we will be bringing that to you tonight for your consideration. We're also disappointed not to receive any funding for our Dots and Parks project. But we do, we would like to update that one day, and that was just our first round. So we'll continue to look at other funding opportunities for that budget. And with that, we'll turn it back to Michelle for the finance department.
I'm almost done talking tonight. Um, so our finance department is made up of two divisions. Our administrative services division primarily handles the cashiering at the front counter and administers the city's business license program. And our accounting division does all the other things that are on this slide. Um, one of the new eighteen people who were onboarded that Hannah talked about, Amy Massey, our accounting manager, will be presenting the next two slides.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, Mayor Schager and Council City Council. Um, finance departments might not be able to. Heather.
You'll hear it immediately, closer, it'll pop.
Hello.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Uh, the finance departments were very busy this year. Um, starting off, we are very proud of the Government Finance Officers Association excellent financial reporting for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report. This is our twenty-sixth year in a row. We hope to keep that streak going. We reorganized our department. We had, as Michelle mentioned before, bless you. As Michelle mentioned before, we had a limited-term senior accounting technician position. Um, that was vacant since June of twenty-two. We chose not to recruit that and funded it. We also had a regular full-time senior accounting technician and a part-time clerk that vacated other positions late last year. These vacancies gives an opportunity to look at our staffing and operations to see if a reorganization can provide more efficient service to the community and to our fellow departments. We decided with the transition of business license administration that we'd be more efficient to bring in higher technical experience in the accounting division and lead the staff as is currently in the customer service division. So we did not recruit the part-time clerk. We raised the, instead, we raised the grade for the senior accounting technician to an accountant to provide the higher technical skills. The accountant position will also assist in developing our current staff's knowledge. Uh, we are continuing our work on the user fee study and expect to have that complete next year. We began the update of the business license ordinance. It's currently being reviewed by staff and will go to the city attorney next month. A public hearing will be scheduled for sometime in the summer. Uh, we began the transition of the business license administration. In November, council approved an agreement with the party out to outsource the business license tax administration. This project kicked off last Thursday. We will meet with the consultant weekly until completion, which is expected before the renewal season starts. Uh, we have developed this G policy. This policy, which you will hear about the next council meeting, is essentially a mechanism that provides a process to eliminate unclaimed property. Most of the city's current unclaimed property is in uncashed checks where we cannot locate the holders. We developed a cannabis business tax form with the complexity of the code. We created a form to assist the businesses in reporting their, in reporting and remitting their taxes. And while doing so, we also created a webpage that helps answer any questions to cannabis businesses. We completed two trans occupancy tax audits. In June of twenty-two, council approved a contract with our financial, for financial audit services. Part of the scope of that work was trans occupancy tax audits and cannabis audits. Two of the trans occupancy tax audits were completed this year. And the cannabis tax audits will have, have not started yet because they don't have a full calendar year of data to offer. Uh, staff training and development with the vacancies that were in the reorganization of the department. We have found it necessary to cross-train on various operations, as well as develop, develop the staff's knowledge and industry best priorities. We just completed training a second staff member on processing payroll and have trained a whole of the accounting division and the accounts payable process. Also in January, we were able to have our accounting division attend the California Society Municipal Finance Officers Annual Conference. Three of those staff received a full scholarship in the cause of the city. Our work plan for twenty-four, twenty-five, we plan to complete projects from twenty-three, twenty-four, such as the business license organs, the business license tax administration transition, and the user fee study. We will complete additional trans occupancy tax audits and cannabis tax audits. We have three trans occupancy tax audits started this summer for the twenty-three tax year. And the cannabis tax audits will begin in the spring of twenty-five for tax year twenty-four. We will issue a request for proposal for sewer user rate study. The goal is to have that issued by June and the study completed by July first, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, next, if you approve, this is part of a decision package. If you approve the package tonight, we will issue a request for a proposal for an ERP system and begin the implementation. Our plan is to issue the RFP next month and begin implementation on a new ERP system later in the year. We will be updating our business license application in supplemental forms. Our plan is to make them more user-friendly as the current forms are not all electronic and are maybe a difficult for our businesses to apply online. We will continue our staff development. We're always looking for low-cost or no-cost webinars and training. And we will continue to review our current processes to identify ways to modernize and to be more efficient while staying within best practices for the industry. And now I'll hand it over to the fiscal plan officer, maybe to tell the charge.
Good evening. Uh, so community and economic development, uh, this is primarily of three different divisions. Our building division, economic development, and planning. All three divisions work seamlessly with each other and with other departments in the city to make sure that we're getting projects done properly. So we've flown our building plan check, unfortunately, at class tonight, so you won't be with us. But we have our senior planner, Arvina Maya, who will be giving us an overview on building and economic development. And then on Gary Brand, his planning technician, Sean Van Veen, who will follow.
And I want you to speak over.
Check, check. All right. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Uh, we will begin by discussing the building division, uh, where our focus has been continuously uh, to improve customer service and find ways to simplify the building plan check and permit issuance process. Uh, the goal is for residents who are not familiar with this process to feel welcome, not intimidated by the process. We have continuous activity in our building division with over one hundred commercial and over five hundred residential plan checks, either in process or completed this year. These all require content coordination between multiple city departments and outside agencies. Uh, for plan checks, uh, that have turned into issued permits, uh, we have over a three hundred commercial and over three thousand residential inspections underway. The Cloudhouse project is currently the most notable of all inspections being conducted at construction sites throughout the city. being conducted at construction sites throughout the city. Now, now that we have covered some of our activity over the last year, we are looking forward to our goals for next year, which again focus on facilitating and streamlining the building plan check and permit issuance process. We will continue to review forms, handouts in our website for potential updates and improved ease of use. Additionally, we will move forward with an RFP process for a plan management system that will preserve our records and streamline the process for, for the public so that they can obtain some permits online from the convenience of their home. We now move on into economic development, which is tasked with supporting our businesses by both attracting new businesses into the city and retaining the existing. Retail, commercial, sorry, the retail commercial cannabis businesses were part of assisting new businesses get established in the city. After several obstacles that resulted in the pandemic and supply chain delays, we were able to coordinate with their development teams and our building divisions to have all four locations open for business by November of twenty twenty-three. As part of retaining and supporting existing businesses, a network breakfast was held with our existing business community. The Business Alliance Breakfast allowed business owners to learn about the various programs implemented by the city to address concerns and issues they have raised. It also gave business owners a chance to learn who their local contacts were and how to access them. staff continues to update the website to identify housing and opportunity sites and is scheduled to attend the International Council of Shopping Centers Conference later this month as part of its attraction efforts to seek new, new business partners for the city. The recently adopted Town Center specific plan has generated interest from various developers and real estate brokers. As such, staff continues to take calls and hold meetings with interested parties. The Economic Development Division plans to continue outreach and networking with industry partners to explore all the new opportunities available for Stanton. We will continue to maintain and promote an inventory of available sites for future development. Staff will continue assisting our existing commercial cannabis retailers apply for a delivery license as well as assisting eligible cultivation businesses to comply with all applicable codes and open with the designated extension period. And I will now turn the microphone over to our newest planning technician, Tiana Fanning, where she will be presenting the planning position.
Good evening, council members and honorable mayor. As a recent addition to the Stanton team, I am proud to have been chosen to represent our planning department and honored to be able to address your. As well as bringing in some fresh new talent, this past year, our standing planning department has been moving. We have been working with multiple departments in inter-agency effort for new housing opportunities through collaboration projects such as seventy-six townhomes with PB Homes with our Lighthouse One and Lighthouse Two projects, picture here, as well as three hundred apartments through the Verbs Project, both of which have new talent. Housing is a major focus, not only here in Stanton, but across the state. And more importantly, affordable housing is a growing need across the state. Stanton is leading by example, turning words into actions by addressing those needs partnering with Jambur Housing through the project home key, which in three sites, they have cumulatively one hundred fifty-three affordable apartments, twenty of which have been reserved for our veterans. In addition to housing, we work diligently through Greencom Consulting to complete our Town Center specific plan. This ensures our community the forward vision that will rely on us and invigorate the central business district. This is built-in incentives to entice, entice developers into community benefits in their projects, affording us a walkable neighborhood to view the commercial downtown center. These mixed-use projects weave together businesses and residential opportunities evenly. One example of such mixed-use projects is seen here in the aforementioned Verbs Project. I use apartment complex, which in addition to the three hundred apartment units that we see, planning is also reviewing a code amendment and a conditional use permit application to allow for six thousand square feet of commercial space on the ground level to provide additional retail space for not only the residents of this complex, but surrounding community members as well. This code amendment, if approved, will pave the way for greater flexibility and potential commercial businesses in the future with mixed-use projects. Looking forward, the planning department is also working with the California Department of Housing and Community Development to amend our local, our local early action planning for LEAK grant award. This LEAK grant allows the city to develop design guidelines for all multi-unit developments to ensure high-quality goals are met with the new local development. Finally, we will continue to make progress on our annual general plan implementation report and housing element progress tracking and reviews. We're selecting objective guidelines through request for proposals, consulting selections and awards, continuing to engage with our community throughout future planning thought. Thank you very much for your time and attention seizing and of course, serving community.
And with that, we turn it over to Sandy Vivadia, Director of Community Services.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm excited for you to hear from us and I'm very excited for you to hear directly from the team everything that we have to offer our residents. I'd like to start by highlighting a few things. First, in our administrative division, I'd like to start with the community services commission. Through ten meetings, we have significant discussions ensuring that our community's diverse voices are heard and valued. Commissioners provide valuable insights to best tailor our services to meet the need and evolve, meet the evolving needs of our residents. Next, we are committed to continual learning and for our staff, we have two leadership retreats and four department-wide trainings in addition to staff participation in professional organizations to secure interest. We held four sessions with eighteen engaged participants in this year's citizens academy. And the Parks Master Plan was recently adopted in October for the roadmap for the next fifteen years to ensure we have accessible and vibrant parks to exist for. We all also have a copy of our new sponsorship packet of from the Dais of Pride. We hope to use this as a tool for new partnerships and ensure that our programs and services remain accessible for all members. And last but not least, our Stanton Collaborative has forged with ten engaging meetings this year and an impressive network of forty-eight partner agencies. You can see some demonstrate strong commitment, pooling resources and offering programs directly to benefits Stanton residents. I'd like to introduce some of our team members, starting with Community Services Manager, Ashley King.
Good evening, Mayor Schager and members of the city council. I'd like to start by sharing some accomplishments from our P I O division. All right. So this year, our P I O committee has been integral in providing feedback on the rebranding project, ensuring that all departments are represented in the decision-making process and they will take a lead role in implementing that brand next fiscal year once it is developed. We've also been trying out a few new marketing strategies and materials as seen on the community services magnet on your dais. That has a QR code to our program registration page. We've also developed postcards recently to directly mail F R C open house event invitations to the surrounding neighborhood of the Family Resource Center. As we talk about events on the next few slides, I want to highlight the efforts that come out of the P I O division to develop branding for new programs. Our logo, fonts, and color system developed for the Paint the Town with Love event and the State of the City helped create visual recognition of the events across all print and electronic marketing materials. We've also continued with our regular messaging by producing free editions of the Stanton Express that's mailed to all households within Stanton, delivering our monthly city manager's newsletter to eighteen hundred subscribers, maintaining the city's website and posting on our city's social media sites. This past fiscal year gained a twenty percent increase in our social media following. All right. This year, the department hosted fifteen special events, so I'll highlight a few of those for you. This January, we were able to bring back the State of the City program for the first time since twenty seventeen, thanks to the city council allocated funding and sponsorships from Culture, Talis, Starbucks, and Great Scott. With those funds, we were able to invite two hundred community members to join us for breakfast and a P C T A produced program about the state of our city. Again, with city council allocated funds and sponsorships from Jambur Housing, Home Depot, Council and Public Affairs, the Stanton Lions Club, Manhattan Stitching, Costco, and Starbucks, we were able to put on our first ever citywide volunteer event, Paint the Town with Love. On Saturday, May fourth, we had a hundred and twenty volunteers participate in fifteen beautification projects across six sites throughout the city. Staff were very humbled by the community's support and the enthusiasm that they showed. We look forward to having the opportunity to continue with that program. Our Senior Resource Center was held today with twenty-five vendors and various house screenings for our aging community. And we'll also be hosting a Red Cross Blood Drive at City Hall on May twenty-first, and registration is available for that on our city website. Invitations have been sent to our teen volunteers, CAC members, Paint the Town volunteers, workability groups, and meals, meals and wheels drivers for a volunteer appreciation picnic on Saturday, June twenty. Staff are planning a lunch, giveaways, and activities for all participants, and this program has also been made possible thanks to allocations of funds from the city council. All right. National Night Out continues to grow in both attendance and the number of activities. We'd like to thank Sarah Shervani from the Sheriff's Department as well as Chief Doman from O C F A for their continued efforts in expanding this event each year and connecting with our Stanton community in such a meaningful way. This year's Family Resource Center Open House was extra special as our event was also a grand opening to the community after an extended closure for much-needed renovations. Those include new flooring, lighting, and H-back system, furniture, paint, and decor. Our Veterans Day Ceremony was held as a breakfast in the banquet hall this year for the first time ever. We were honored to be able to have the family of one of our founding city council members and Rukia Mendez in attendance to receive the flag from our flag building ceremony. Lastly, but certainly not least, the holiday season, this holiday season, we were able to provide families with Christmas trees through our Adopt a Tree program sponsored by the Holiday Tree Farm, Home Depot, and B B K, as well as provide toys and gifts to hundreds of families and children through a partnership with Carina's Backpack Program and the Santa Siren event that's hosted by the Youth Assistance Foundation. Finally, thanks to a sponsorship from B B K, we were able to bring some extra joy to our annual tree lighting ceremony with the addition of falling snow.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Wendy Acosta, Community Service Coordinator at Stanton Central Park. I wanted to kind of go over our park operations over at Stanton Central Park. Throughout our year, we do have our staff members conducting hourly park checks to ensure that daily operations are running smoothly and that park rules are being followed. So with that being said, we have received a total of one hundred forty-one thousand and one hundred attendees throughout the year at Stanton Central Park, enjoying amenities such as tennis courts, basketball playground, and such. With that being said, our field use is also booked and busy from Monday to Sunday with five field users. And we do average around four hundred athletes a week. With that being said, we also have picnic shelter rentals available for members of the public to reserve for parties and events. So we have been able to host our, have the shelters booked for two hundred and forty-nine events throughout the year. Moving forward onto our free recreation program, we do offer a variety here in Stanton. With that being said, the first one, we do have our after-school program that is held at the Stanton Family Resource Center. This program runs from Monday through Thursday from three to six P M. And we have averaged around twenty participants daily. Moving on to the next one, we have our family night out. This consists of a family-friendly activity that is open for people of all ages, from toddlers up until seniors. So we have posted a total of five events and we do average at around sixty participants for these family night outs. Moving on next to our teen night out, similar sense, but it does focus for teens ages twelve to fifteen. We have posted a total of four events and we do average at around fifteen participants. Moving on to our next one, our kids' night out. This one is catered more towards the little ones from children ages six to eleven. This is a monthly program that is held on the fourth Friday of the month and it is full with a total of twenty-five participants. With that being said, our Stanton Teen Volunteer Program, we do have a total of forty-seven teens that have registered and completed orientation. And throughout the year, they have averaged at around a total of three hundred and fifty-five hours. We have also hosted our summer camp for five weeks in the summer that has been full with twenty participants. Last point I wanted to bring up is our Everyone Plays Scholarship. So this is a scholarship in order to give everyone access to our fee-based programs. So we do have this scholarship available. This covers up to fifty dollars per child for a total of three seasons and then families are able to reapply once they have finished the third season.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Kimmy Wilson, Community Services Coordinator, working at City Hall with seniors and project programs. Our senior services continues to offer daily meals and activities Monday through Thursday, as well as special events. Our congregate in-person meals from July twenty-three through April twenty-four served four thousand and sixty-five meals. And our home-delivered meals, we delivered four thousand meals between July and twenty-two. Four, these meals programs were in partnership with the Women's Movement. Our excursions, we are very grateful for the amount of funds that have allowed us to bring back excursions. Our seniors were able to visit the youth center in February twenty-twenty-four. It was full with fifty attendees. We were able to offer a trip free of charge, transportation and lunch included, providing this excursion to our community eliminated barriers to access and created new opportunities and experiences for our seniors on the new connections and experiences. We received very positive feedback with many attendees writing thank you notes and asking me what we made. And we're very delighted to announce that we will have a second one to be placed in June twenty-twenty-four. We'll be visiting the Saadis Festival on the beach. And this is also full already with a waitlist of ten-plus seniors. So we're very excited to offer the second one and again, very grateful for your support. Our free activities can be placed Monday through Thursday. Monday mornings, we have painting offered in partnership with North Orange County Continuing Education. Tuesdays, we have staff-led ruler class. Wednesdays, we also have Help Yourself to Health class offered in partnership with North Orange County Continuing Education. And on Thursdays, we have volunteer-led field as well as our special seasonal programs such as Eat the Eve movies and.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Joseph Theo, Community Services Coordinator at Stanton Family Resource Center.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Anne Nguyen. I'm a senior coordinator for City and the City.
As you mentioned, that for the renovation this fiscal year, and we are as busy as ever. This year, we had one thousand one hundred forty-eight individuals for information and referral services, twelve participants and eight tutors for our MAP tutoring program. Our counseling services entails individual, child, and group slash family practices with one thousand thirty-eight sessions. And this, this year's groups included our after-school program for ages six to eight, six to eleven, teens twelve to fifteen, parent empowerment program, and couples in progress, which ends in June. Case management entails one hundred and three families. Family support services, which provide ongoing support and plans for individual families, which includes one hundred forty-one families. Parenting education with twenty individuals. And I'd like to highlight that this long-standing partnership with all the press. So that's definitely why we had an increase in our participation. Developmental screenings are held twice a year. Second Harvest Food Distribution Program with one hundred and twenty families per month. And thank you to our council. And thank you to our council, our uh and for twenty twenty-four, our family excursions. Uh, June first, we will be attending Queremont Pacific and June fifteenth, uh others. So we have fifty families attending those.
And I'm going to talk about um the Community Engaging Advisory Committee, which is made up of twenty-five members. I know some of you have heard about this a lot. But it's a group that um is learning to use its voice to talk about issues in the city to support activities that are provided by the city council, by our community services, um and by people here. So um our CAC, as we call it, our support programs that are offered here. We uh do a big walk with NAMI every year to uh talk about mental health, the stigma, trying to get rid of the stigma of mental illness. Uh, we work with America on Track for Healthy Communities. We uh this year had a service day project uh in honor of Dr. King. Uh, and his issue of being a beloved community, and we made a hundred and sixty hygiene bags for our unhoused members. And uh we work hard on education for ourselves and the community. So we've worked with Orange County Department of Ed from, or Save from the Start with um we did an education event on human trafficking with Lin Tran from Waymakers. And we constantly trying to improve ourselves, and we're thankful to the city council for giving us the opportunity. It's very important for us to be a voice in the community and to watch the people who live in this community feel free to be able to speak about what they love about this city, but also what are their concerns. So thank you again for your opportunity.
Yeah, as we approach the next fiscal year, we look forward to continuing our goals. I want to highlight some goals in our work plan for this upcoming fiscal year. Uh, first, we're excited to launch the branding project as soon as it's finalized to showcase the unique identity of our city and LVR visibility in the region. Um, I would like to give a special thank you to the Ad Hop Committee, Mayor Cortin Warren, and Councilman Peter Taylor for their support along this project. With this launch, we will be updating our city website as part of our four-year contract with provides to align with the new branding. We hope to offer a series of excursions and purchase a new accessible vehicle funded by OCTA grant funds to continue to prioritize mobility and mobility of our older workforce, older adults, and families. And we will pursue another grant cycle through our FAP program to continue to fund family support services at Family Resource Center. And we are currently reviewing and updating our municipal code as recommended by our Community Services Commission, um focused on park and facilities to ensure that our spaces remain inclusive as we continue to develop and expand our parks. And we look forward to more groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings and working with public works to support upcoming projects with senior centers, sports parks, junior parks, and extension park bridges. I'm going to pass it over to the Public Safety Director, Jim Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, presenting the Public Safety Budgets, now I have two of our newer employees. We have Coach Specialist Zach Taylor, who uh he was since he was all business, hardworking guy. And uh Diana Bustamante, who was outreach coordinator uh funded by the Hope Center and created the bio-grain on behalf of with us in the city uh each week now, which is a huge benefit.
Good evening, Council. For our first part of the accomplishments in the parking enforcement, this year we cited uh seven thousand four hundred forty-nine vehicles. And I play first hand, it's a good way to learn how to get yelled at by residents. There's also a lot of thanking residents in certain areas where they had that issues with cars parked in their areas. Uh, we've had seventy-six people's code from July to March. In the animal care, uh we, there were four hundred and twenty-nine fall uh toll calls, three hundred and thirty-three uh cases resolved. The Stanton's WAG, Stanton Wags at adoption, uh saw ninety-nine dogs, four hundred and seventy-eight cats, and thirteen others that were part of the adoption program. Uh, returned owners, thirty dogs, seven cats, and one other. In emergency management, we've incorporated blue light cameras into the B O C to provide multiple, to provide real-time uh surveillance, surveillance capabilities in the venue of emergency. Uh, we've conducted various uh field safety training exercises, and new employees have completed the I C S training uh exercise.
So um in this past year, as part of the homeless outreach services that we have provided, we did receive uh total of myself, six hundred eighty-six calls. Um, being you and myself, I know I only received about six of those. Um, as Brad mentioned, I am here as part of our collaborative efforts through the Hope Center. Um, and after about a hundred calls, schedules, meetings, and two successful meetings, I did come to the city of Stanton about two weeks ago. Uh, so most of the numbers come from our current outreach work group. And we have had current new client attractions of two hundred and fifty-four, a total client attraction of one thousand five hundred seventy-nine. Uh, currently, we've placed fifteen individuals in interim housing, and we've placed eight individuals in emergency housing with a hotel. Uh, as part of our county reports, though, we have successfully referred nineteen individuals to the critical care and eleven individuals into our money help services, as well as three individuals into the program. Uh, unfortunately, there have been some declines on our G D ten, so about one thousand four hundred seventy-seven have declined.
Uh, continuing the accomplishments from this year, uh code enforcement, uh issued seventy-five administrative citations along with respecting uh automated automotive usage, so inoperable vehicles, uh massage establishments, day spas, hotels, smoke shops, and street vendors. Uh, we daily monitor illegal activities of gambling, illegal dispensaries, street vendors, and issues related to homelessness. Uh, served as a key ambassador to the business community, addressed illegal uh food vending operations and collaboration with various agencies. Uh, created a licensed drinking establishment monitoring system and closed the illegal dispensaries.
Alright, so moving forward with our twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five work plan, uh we are going to continue to provide outreach services to members of the homeless community, uh continuing to address quality of life issues for businesses and residents related to the impacts of homelessness. So obviously, we see both sides of that. Uh, once we solve homelessness, we are going to work with community to update municipal code related to best practices for motel operations. So we're focused on addressing some of those um issues still remaining related to motels in the city. Uh, continue to enforce the city's business license requirements and then expand the use of the technology to a greater level of service to the community. And by that, we're focusing uh on blue light cameras, integrated rolling those out, uh working with businesses on lighting, other domain of the nation. Um, basically, we try to do other things. That is all. Thank you.
Alright.
Good evening. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Staff, and Council for having us here to talk about uh Orange County Fire Authority's fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four accomplishments and our work plan for twenty-four, twenty-five. In uh fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, Orange County Fire Authority had three thousand seven hundred and nineteen incident responses from June to March. Our community education and outreach attended various community events, school programs, and hosted fire truck engine visits, simulated monthly safety messages that are viewed on Orange County Fire Authority's website, and hosted a successful fire station open house uh locally here in City of Stanton and at our headquarters in Irvine. They continue to do uh continuous training in emergency medical services, operations, and technical rescue. For the twenty-four, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, Orange County Fire Authority's work plan is continuing to respond uh to emergency and all hazard incidents, ensuring that the city of Stanton and its citizens receive successful and efficient public safety services. Orange County Fire Authority applied for grant funding, which would help increase staffing for twenty-four six. Community, education, and outreach, uh individuals continue to uh do outreach efforts in car seat installation and smoke alarm program installation events. They continue to do training, and our human resources section uh continues with recruitment, retention, and development of our qualified personnel, and new career development and training programs. We are currently developing and continuing to limit our critical response teams for mental health and wellness. Thank you uh for having us.
Thank you, Captain Savi. Next, our Chief of Police, Ryan Pierce, will come up and present on behalf of the Orange County Sheriff's Department accomplishments and work plan.
Alright, so, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four, uh Orange County Sheriff's Department responded to, or excuse me, received and responded to over twelve thousand six hundred calls for service. Uh, our deputies also made three thousand six hundred uh observations uh related to criminal activity. Uh, our average response time was just a little over five minutes, and we closed out five hundred investigations. Our staff took part in community events, including Coffee with a Cop, uh Citizens Academy, and National Night Out. And we continue to utilize uh and have the special resources from the Orange County Sheriff's Department, which is in our whole city, uh via SWAT, SWAT, K-Nines, and crisis negotiations. Uh, and we continue to train our staff uh in accordance with department guidelines. Our work plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year is to continue to provide excellent customer service to our residents and business owners in the city of Stanton. Uh, we want to continue to build upon the positive working relationships uh with city council and city staff. And we will work through these regular reports to ensure that the city council and city staff can make informed decisions related to public safety. And we are also looking forward to uh the grant that was received, uh secured for station improvements.
Thank you. Onto public works. Public Works Director, Seaver Igo.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. Excuse my go through of work. So, the last department, we keep you free. Uh, we're almost there. So one of the things I wanted to just mention today is I'm really excited to share all you've done in the Public Works Department. Um, and also just the seven divisions that we've accomplished together in the Public Works Department. So as the mayor was saying earlier, uh you know, one of our goals is paving. Uh, as you can see, we just completed Cerritos and uh also Cattella, Dale, and Devonwood. Uh, we're also completing recently, we didn't add them in here because that's more of a recent accomplishment. But um that is one of our goals here. We are going to continue next year, a lot more residential. We focus on materials collectors recently. But next year, you'll see a lot more of the residential street. So there's been some calls and we're almost there where you can get very few of the streets. Uh, here is Stormdrain. So um as we're working through the Stormdrain Master Plan, that was uh something that we're updating now. Um, and it's been, last time was updated was back in nineteen ninety-one. So one of the projects we have to do, we had a small uh issue with the Stormdrain system down on Stanford. So we completed that this year, and we're moving on to see what our uh Stormdrain Master Plan looks like over the next couple of years. So here, uh the big news is this Thursday, we have the ribbon cutting. Uh, so the fitness equipment, that's definitely a big exciting accomplishment for our staff here. Uh, working with S C E, uh it took a lot of times. I know this was a grant originally started uh a couple of years ago, but we got it done, and we're excited to do the ribbon cutting. So uh here are some of the projects that I want to highlight. First one is Norman Ross Park's Park. Um, that one, we're definitely getting close to, you know, getting the ground. I think by the end of this year, we'll start construction. Uh, let's see, midsummer, we'll bring the plans back uh to council for approval and going out to bid. Uh, so we're really moving forward with that project. Uh, the next one is our sewer master plan. I'm hopeful that this June, next month, we're going to bring it in for adoption. So that's going to close that there and pretty much outlay our next uh couple of years of sewer projects. And the F R C Phase Two Playground, we just opened bids uh in last week, so we're excited for that. That's going to be coming down for council approval and get that uh project done. We got Phase One, as mentioned before, so Phase Two, here we come. Um, so here, some of the uh things I wanted to point out here is, um so, this is, you know, Public Works Week, one of our, our team has always been uh out there. Unfortunately, we had a, we had a few emergencies over the last year. Uh, we had some potential sinkholes, we had some uh S S Os, but our Public Works Department's been there. Uh, it hooks on the ground, making sure that everybody's safe, they contain it, and then you make sure that it doesn't get uh any worse. So uh here's some of the projects I want to accomplish too. Again, paving is a big thing for us here. Uh, so we, we did a uh kind of intermediate uh patching uh on Western. That was one of our biggest uh concerns there with all the rain we got this year. Uh, it just, that's creates more potholes. So we, we did a citywide kind of patching over throughout the city. Uh, and then we also keep our sidewalk restriking things uh that we want to do annually. That's something that uh we want to continue to just kind of hit the different areas of the city, um and keep those sidewalks definitely uh to, you know, adjust any concerns, and then striking, of course, to making sure that everything's generalized, so we'll be proud on the, on the correct ones. So uh, one of the things here is, is so if you see in front of you, a lot of these projects were working with the different departments. So the uh Hooper left the door installed there. I was with Public Safety, you know, I got a call from Jim Ren, he thought, hey, let's, let's get a door there to kind of help prevent people, you know, crossing there. We got it done. Uh, Finance Department, we worked together to get their volume created. Uh, that's what I was doing, you know, working with them. And then Community Services, we worked with them on the F R C, we got it done. So our Public Works Department just all-round works with all the departments, you know, on a daily basis, at least uh once or twice a year. Now, I want to take some time here. Uh, next thing is our C I P. So Elias Garcia, our Assistant City Engineer, is going to present that. Uh, but before I do that, I just want to also mention, uh thank you again to my Public Works Department, uh Scott Jensen, Caspenya, Craig Saber, Kevin White, Eladio Ortega, Armando, Amanda Cruz, uh Tom Solio, Manuela Mienta, Elias Garcia, and Joe Garcia as well. So I want to thank them, and Elias, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I was told to have uh forty-five minutes to present here. So for those of you that are still here, I better make it quick. Um, next slide. I'll be um introducing the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five C I P projects, and yes, there's a lot going on, okay? There's a quiz at the end of this. Uh, we have about one point six nine million uh for Mezuram and S B one for our street rehabilitation. Uh, technically programmed, it's a year old thing, and uh basically to remove and replace deficient asphalt uh throughout the city. And uh here goes the first one. How many miles of roadway are there in the city? That is forty-four miles. There's nineteen signal lights intersecting. Next slide. Um, our annual sewer rehabilitation project, um we have about one point four million dollars for this next fiscal year budgeted to remove, repair, remove, and replace deficient sewer pipelines, and um they're all prioritized for sewer master. Um, the locations for the twenty-four, twenty-five project will be focused on the Apple Tree, the Via Corana, and the Yacht and Water Track. This one also has a question. How many miles of sewer do we have? About forty miles close, close to the uh streets. Next slide. The sheriff's station improvements, um we recently received a million-dollar federal earmark uh grant for this, and uh this is to provide facility renovations, uh pretty much so upgraded. And this is to provide facility renovations, pretty much so upgrade the facility and keep our sheriffs happy, the people safe. It's a one-on-one situation here. Ask you. And, well, this one's a little bit longer. So, here we go. The word sheriff means keeper or chief of the county. And it's derived from the Anglo-Saxon words Shire Gru. The Shire, in the days of King Alfred the Great of England, in eight hundred and seventy-one, was responsible for collecting taxes and enforcing the king's rule. Next slide. We've got to kick with this one here. Community senior center improvements. We have about three hundred and fifty from C E B G grant. And we'll be maintaining and renovating, upgrading for A D A and all that fun stuff in the restroom. So, naturally, this question is about the bridge. How many toilets are there in that side of the building? And if you guessed eleven, then you would be correct. Not including the standing stall. Next slide, please. Earlier, folks mentioned the Vision Zero Action Plan. We have funding for that and there's about two hundred K for this project. We are developing the scope for this assignment. And ultimately, we're going to try to get as close as possible to that, complete that vision. Although you can imagine with so many vehicles on the roadway, it is a hefty task. Some might even say impossible. But that's what we're here for. So, the question is, how many of those vehicles do you guys think travel on each ballpark alone? Not quite. A day, pardon me. A day. Ooh, all right. So, it's about half of that. We're linking out about sixty-one to seventy thousand a day. That's a lot of traffic for comparison in one quarter of the twenty-two freeway, by the way, a day. Next slide. We're almost done here. Anyway, concrete repair. We have about two hundred and forty thousand. And I'm not going to name the whole acronym there. There's also gas tax, you guys can read it up there. The project description is pretty much what it sounds, repair, material contract, concrete infrastructure. This is citywide. And, well, this is less of a quiz, but I want to give you guys a good analogy. Concrete is like baking cake. What you need is the stable foundation, which is your pan for the ground. Concrete aggregates, which is the cake mix, add water, stir it up. And then you pour it and you cure the concrete for thirty days or in the kitchen for thirty minutes. And voila. Next slide. Dotson Park Resurfacing Project. We have two hundred and twenty thousand from Parkland New. And the assignment here is to remove and replace the localized place surface in the area of Dotson Park. This one's a little bit different. Who invented the first swings and where'd they come from? Very important question for us as we were throwing up. This for me. The Minoan people that came from the island of Crete, south of Greece. And that was fourteen fifty, thirteen hundred B.C. Next slide. Furniture Rehabilitation Project. And we have a one hundred and forty-nine thousand budget for Mezuram for this assignment. And the city of Garden Grove is the lead agency for this resurfacing project. And the city of Stanton will share costs for work done within the city of Stanton, of course. And here's another fun one. According to Statista, an online platform that specializes in data gatherings and visualization. There's about seventeen thousand rehabilitation centers in U.S. I don't think anyone about that. Anyway, that is all for tonight, I hope. And thank you for having me.
Thank you. So enjoyed. So, Mayor, I believe you have a motion.
Yes, I do. Before we do though, I want to ask, does he should write that speech for you?
Well, sir.
I'm just checking.
You help me.
A couple of folks had no lead, but I want to thank all the staff presentations. I think they were excellent. And well thought out. And we're so proud of your accomplishments. I think that we get a chance to get this out to the public so they can see what you folks actually do. They have no idea of the amount of time and work and energy that you have put in to make this stand for this today. I also enjoy the fact that it's important that not the department heads, but it's the individuals who actually are down in the trenches working. They're giving a solid report. I know that our leadership from our private shares is outstanding. But you guys are the bees, you know, going down there making all that good stuff happen. So, on behalf of the city, we want to thank you all, like all of you knew. We want to thank you for the outstanding work you gave us tonight. Now, that being said, how many of you have not gotten your official Stanton cane? Anybody? Okay, well, you're going to get that tonight because anybody that speaks here gets a pen. That's our little boy, guys. And so, Patricia will take care of that. Number two, we are, and we're going to take a short recess in a moment. And the reason we're going to do that is because when we come back, we're going to, we're going to haggle over how we're going to spend money that you want to spend. So, now you have a choice. You can sit here for the next six hours while we haggle. Or you can grab some goodies and go home with your family. So, you don't come back to work in the morning. You're welcome to do it either way. The choice is entirely up to you. Also, before we do that, I do have a big slight question before you do recess. If it's okay with the council, I'd like to move twelve E up right now and into the boy head and break. And then if there's anything, anybody else would like to move something up, please go, please give us any more of a chance. So, at this time, I like to, we'll recess for about ten or fifteen minutes so that we can grab some goodies in the back. I like moving twelve E. I think that's okay.
We do need a motion and a second and a vote to take it out of order, please.
On favor. I'm ready to vote. Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a call to you. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor, item twelve E is City Council Initiative Item Discussion Regarding City Rules and Regulations Pertains to Special Events for City Businesses. At the April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, City Council Mayor Tim Warren requests that the city agenda is for discussion. Mayor Tim Warren is requesting to discuss revisiting review of the city's current rules and regulations pertaining to special events to allow for more events to be held for business per year.
Yes, I've had some of those damn businesses ask me about this topic. So, I thought I'd bring it back to council and see if there was a way that we could allow for more outdoor activities as well as indoor. For our, in something. An example would be Romeo thirty-nine. According to our rules, they've reached their limits for the year. We have all the summer in front of them and they'd love to do some more outdoor activities. So, that's why I thought it was good for us to be.
Gary, I can comment on that. When we first adopted the ordinance, resolution from the Fire Commission at that time, we intended for them to be able to have outdoor activities all throughout different seasons, whether it was Christmas, Easter, you know, New Year. And we've had those. It's had a tough, the other thing too is that you got to realize you weren't just one business here. So, each of the businesses that were prohibited from having it because we weren't able to take care of all the needs.
There's eighteen businesses there.
So, it's a.
More of a fall for the pop holder. Not missing.
So, I think, I think if staff came back to us with some type of a program so that we can have an activity there, I would, may I personally, as long as it's done under our ordinance guide, doesn't affect the neighbors, the weather, you're having a problem with it. I thought we should, I can't think of any complacency except one time somebody said that they were selling food that was old or something. But they don't sell food because they don't want to compete with the food that's being sold at the time. So, I think my recommendation is I fully support Carol's idea. And if we can come back with some kind of a solution to it, I think it would be great. So, that would be the direction that I would like to get. Though I had that, is to just have city staff work with our attorney, come back with a ordinance amendment that we can have that.
Kind of helping with residents in the area and nobody has to worry.
Well.
Can accommodate everything.
You got it.
Anything to question, Ms. Tavie?
I should put it.
Okay. What is, what does our current ordinance say in terms of the number of activities that can be allowed? And then what is the number that you're looking at?
Well, for the first question, I'll have our Community Development Director respond. So, currently, the maximum is six for the entire year.
And would this ordinance also put all the businesses in one seat or just?
It would, it would depend upon how council directed the staff to bring back the solution.
Well, does it hurt or is it possible?
Yeah, okay.
Well, one of the things that differentiates us, I know that we had our Park Day, which is our surprise, since we used to have, Public Market, every Saturday. Who's at, right over there at, what's the name? Oh, it's called.
Park Ave.
Park Ave, yeah. So, Park Ave used to have, every Saturday, they used to have, I mean, it's, they used to have the Public Market. It's very successful. And so, to me, places like Romeo thirty-nine, and by the way, just for the information, we have, we were the first one. Now, depending, we're almost getting into the fifth, the five different cities. We were the first, but it's become very successful. And most of those, they have every weekend, some type of an activity going on there. So, however we write it, it's outdoors. You know, if we can maybe come up with an idea of separating that from our dealership or something like that, that might be the best way to do it. Before we go on though, I, the reason I moved this up is two gentlemen have been sitting here for almost two hours. They're representative of thirty-nine. And maybe, Paul, could you come up?
Yeah.
And give us a little idea of what your expectations are. That would be very helpful.
Yeah, I know, Mo, sorry.
You know that. Who you are?
Oh, my name's Paul. I'm the Director of Operations for Romeo Thirty-nine. You know, there is, there is six, you know, regulated, you know, events for all businesses, but our, this building is special. It was special when it first started. It's still special now. It's twenty-six businesses they're actually in there. So, if you're, you're saying, hey, every business has a chance to have six businesses, how is it fair for our one, you know, kind of community center to only have six altogether for twenty-six businesses? I think there should be some type of, you know, leeway as far as that. When we're hearing all this stuff for today, there's all these things that we're hearing about Santas and sirens and Paint the Town with Love. We were part of all these things, you know, and so we try to support, we got as much as possible. We put, you know, Stanton Classic Car Show on our billboards as much as possible. And we just got that up today. And we try to help anyway we can. We need support in this as well. The events are, you know, this is a tough year. So, the events are like a bloodstream for businesses. So, as it gets tougher and tougher throughout the years, this is something that we need to ask. Thank you. Austin, you want to say something?
Good evening. My name is Austin Ritter. I'm the Event Coordinator for Romeo Thirty-nine. I work in partnership with Pastor and Paul. Together, we spend a significant amount of time during events to cater to our community, to bring activations based on requests of our residents. This is an effort we created to create safety and total place at Romeo Thirty-nine for families, you know, they all spend their leisure time. We are here today to express our support for the continued of hosting events for Romeo Thirty-nine public market. For the past years, Romeo Thirty-nine in Stanton has become a cherished destination for both tourists and locals. The markets, car meets, toy drives, seasonal celebrations, and other special events have created a vibrant and diverse community at Romeo Thirty-nine. These events not only enhance the quality, I think, of Stanton, but also attracts visitors, both boosting our local businesses, fostering a sense of beauty in our small park at Romeo Thirty-nine. We've seen firsthand the impact of the gatherings at our property and good rock community together over the past few years. It's important to note that we don't host events to make any money at all. In fact, most of the time, we spend money out of our own budget to make the events possible. We definitely want to express our gratitude for the city council and the mayor's aid for being a huge support for the past few years. It really has been great for what you guys have done and supported. We are open to help and be involved as much as possible. We're honored to be a part of this community. And we just respectfully ask your support to allow us to host more events at Romeo Thirty-nine so we can continue to highlight what makes Stanton so special. Thank you so much.
Well, I, I just mentioned to Carol, Carol told me that if we went by our existing guidelines, if you have twenty-six businesses and Easter allowed to have how many?
Six of them.
Six?
Six.
Okay, so if we just take, if they just had two, that would cover the whole year. Do you times by six, it's fifty-two? I didn't, I passed.
Could I ask you guys a question?
Yeah, yes, sir.
How was the parking there on weekends? I assume most of your events are on weekends? Yeah, are you using, what's that?
Village Center Drive?
Village Center Drive. Are you using that for employee parking or anything?
Yeah, yeah, we are. I mean, on the weekends, Village Center Drive is full, from Gardrow Boulevard to Beach Boulevard. You'll see cars parked all throughout there, you know? So, we've tried to regulate the only, you know, the events only to like Sundays, you know, just because we have, you know, we know that on Saturdays, families at Crosspoint like to go places. So, we took all this into consideration, you know? So, along with that, we count the number of holidays that we have. We'd like to do an event every holiday for the community to come here, but now we're picking and choosing. We have to go, okay, Halloween is one, Christmas is one. Okay, forget Easter, you know, Mother's Day is out, you know, these are all considerations that we have. And even looking at the presentation today, the residential is booming in Stanton, right? You've got the verb and you've got the cross the street, the new one rising. Do you guys want these guys to stay in Stanton on the weekends? Or do you want them to go somewhere else? Do you want them to go to the Packers? Along with that, if we bring more people, I mean, you know, the sales tax goes up considerably, you know, for the sales that we have in the building. So, I mean, I think this is the win-win. We're looking at community pride and forward vision. I think you can't go wrong. So, yeah.
You know, Gary, I think one of my questions was asked, you know, the party, but the other question. They have six events a year. We don't say, look, how's your?
I understand that.
No, no, I understand. Great.
Paul, when we spoke on the phone, you were talking about eighteen company of your businesses that would like to be participating in these events, right?
Yeah, we have eighteen food businesses, but we also have considerable number of, you know, retail businesses. We have new ones moving into, what is that, art from this area, art from North Orange County. And so, you know, these ones, these ones would like to be a part of it.
When you say six events a year, is that per address or applicant per business or having each other?
So, there's, there's different classifications within the municipal code. If it is just the center having an outdoor sales, one of these businesses displaying their items outside, having a tent sale or something, that is actually a little bit only for events per year. This type of event, typically the applications that we receive are for a third-party vendor to come to town in the area. That is typically used for outdoor sales. Outdoor vendors, that outdoor third-party vendor then have to bring smaller vendors to help these in that area. For us, in our code qualifies as the temporary use permit, and that's where the six events come in. So, that would be for the center overall, but not just that business, that entire center community.
And then do you know if, like he had mentioned, the Manhattan Packing House, if those types of places also have those? Women don't have one of the operating numbers?
Yeah, every city has their own women. Usually you'll see a. Usually you'll see around four to six women. But again, it just, it depends, I've seen them also up to twelve.
I would invite you to look at their calendar, the Packing House's calendar. It's, it's not twelve, it's not, it's not even, it's not even thirty, it's every weekend they do this. They're using that front lawn where people are walking by, that's even more of a traffic burden, right? It's right there on the street. These are, these are the companies that we're. So if we want to, Packing House has been here for seventeen years, and if we want Rodeo Thirty-Nine to be here for seventeen years, longer than that, and actually compete, we need, we need a adoption. Because, like we said, we need your support on this.
I was, I did tell you that I had to push up to me, you know, I told you that we were Kimberly Hope, we're discussing Kimberly and also Charlie. And then also Bernbo, to see if we could not, with the medical facility, close up. They have fifty parking places. If we just took the parking for the employees and put them there, that would take a lot of pressure on. We're in under negotiations with that house, but hopefully that would be a little bit of some.
Mr. Paul, if I may ask, you're saying that six is not adequate. What is a reasonable number?
We'd like to have two a month.
Two a month?
That's, that's what we're looking for.
Twelve would have been one.
Yeah, we're looking for two a month. Four would be better, but twelve a month, that's.
Twenty, twenty-four for the year.
Twenty-four, twenty-four for the year, that's what we're looking for. We, we realize that, that the events, if we go them outside, we took all this into consideration. We know that we have residents right there at Crosspoint. A lot of those Crosspoint residents are actually our patrons, you know, and so we have regular conversations with these, with these people. And we understand that, hey, to do something every weekend may be a little bit, you know, nauseous, you know? So we, we've thought, you know, twice, twice a month. And when we, when we talk to the Crosspoint residents, they're okay with that. Actually, one of our best patrons is the one that's right, right in front of us, so she gets the brunt of it, you know? And she's okay with two of them, that's, that's what we're looking for. We're not looking for something crazy.
Oh, what type of events are you talking about?
Mostly it's like, it's like crafts, to be honest. Mostly it's college students trying to sell their clothes. Mostly it's like they're getting ready for, you know, summer, it's mostly them making like candles, making Christmas, stuff like that. It's not, it's not like we're having big businesses come out, you know, it's nothing like that. It's very much like, almost like a divorce.
I think one of the other things is that, is that when I had a chance to visit, they were mostly school kids, like they said, they had the crafts, things like that. But the thing that's nice about it is if anybody comes in that has a retail selling license, they were able to capture the tax on that. But those that don't, then there's no responsibility. I think that is, regulates itself in the state law.
So if, if I ask, what's the reason?
The, the reasoning that, it was adopted in the code, so we're required to, whatever it is there does. Traditionally, I believe, it's, it's usually because they're supposed to be for brand openings or for special types of sales, but your mother's day. Now Flower Shop will have an outdoor, it's like, that's typically what those have been traditionally for, and that's why a lot of, a lot of cities have that in their code, that, that small number. We do have newer concepts that come out every year, especially in the last few years. So this is a newer concept that our code, our traditional code doesn't really address. So it is something worth looking into, but these ordinance, that's usually why we see this.
We have other businesses in that plaza as well, you know, so if we're talking about brand opening, Lenny Fan just opened a lash academy. Does that take into account one of our events? Because she's part of our plaza. I think with a big, big plaza like ours, it looks like, doesn't make sense, it just doesn't. For six, six for the entire, you know, square footage of that, of that, canes, In-N-Out, chains, all of that, just doesn't make sense.
If I may ask again, what is the average turnout of those ten?
It really, it really just depends on the event, we have some smaller events, we host, like we're doing a pickleball event tomorrow afternoon, and there's about, I think, I think there's about a hundred and ten reservations. Some of the larger markets, anywhere, I would say, high from three to five hundred people, in addition to our regular traffic on the weekends. So they really do vary depending on the type of event. Some are really just meant to draw business during, during the weekdays, kind of help during the slower times, but other ones are kind of bigger trough, because they have kind of gains popularity, attraction.
And where are they all parking? You have the three to five hundred people.
I'm really sure. I mean, we, we try to, leading up to the events, we try to partner with the board to help with like carpooling and discounted rides to and from. We actually have like a couple hotspots with them to kind of help promote that, whether they use it or not, we weren't really sure how successful it was. We had to have parked over Walmart before, but we definitely don't recommend that, return from that.
And I think the city has come out during one of the events and checked up on parking, they didn't find any like major violations. I think they took one car that was parked in the red, that was there. For the most part, we're out there, we're trying to handle it as soon as possible. There was no like safety concern on Village Center Drive. Yeah, did they, did they park, you know, wherever they could, yes, they parked as well.
And so there's the, there's the boxing school grandmas, grandmas right off street, they've allowed us to use their parking for two, two events.
I'm, I'm hoping we can look at the best, and since there might be other businesses that came along, if we can look at the frequency of events. Copy more events for Rodeo Thirty-Nine.
So the more direction you can give us today, the easier this will be for staff, and so I can be, we're happy to bring you something back, but no, we're going to lay the process. This will require more than a day.
Rodeo has twelve events a year.
So yes, if you phrase it like that, that is much more helpful for us.
Twelve, twelve there, that's what's enough, there are twenty-one, so twenty-four.
I, I wonder if there's a way to break the ordinance so that we can account for businesses that clearly dozens of other businesses under them? Because I think perhaps when we had that ordinance initially, we're thinking this is a whole traditional business. This one is kind of like a portion of businesses. Maybe that ended up in some separate category, and we can look at how maybe businesses that have so many other entities under them, that that maybe they should have a different, different regulations.
Austin, should we do that, would you be okay with allowing the, the, so what would you plan?
I, I think if we're going to make it an ordinance, we need to be really clear, and we need to apply it across the board. I'll say, you know, for Rodeo Thirty-Nine, we're going to allow, I don't know if we can do that.
I think we should clarify it, but Crystal, can any of those businesses pull?
They can, but not for the type of activity Paul was talking about. So the, I mean, individual businesses can't be on behalf of a gathering. You know, if, if they count, I, I, or Rodeo Thirty-Nine. I think staff can come up with a categorization that, that describes this unique type of facility. We don't have a lot, if any other one in this city that complicates all our businesses under. So we can describe it like that, because who knows in the future, perhaps in the TCSP, we may have another model like this or somewhere else in town. So we don't have to come out first, but we can do a good job of clearly defining this type of use of facility. The city attorney was also advising, I mean, the council wants to, to kind of test this out and see, hey, does the community come out of parking issues? We can make an ordinance amendment, and we can have a sunset date on that. So we can try it for twelve months. We can obviously renew feedback throughout the twelve months, as if any issues arise, we don't have to allow it to go to their time, and then that also puts a sunset period on it. And then we can revisit that that time and see how we might.
Because I can also see why Super Game just upgraded their own facility. And I could see maybe them and some of the other businesses in their center, you know, wanting to do maybe more than six events over the summer. So maybe we do a new category that's like multiple businesses within, you know, one, one category.
So I, I think, so let me try and see if I can phrase it, if somebody wants to make a motion. So we were asking staff to visit, to revisit an amendment to the municipal code to create a new category of facility and outdoor event use for a maximum of twenty-four uses per year. You know, it would have a sunset date twelve months from when it takes effect. Crystal, do you know if that's in that direction?
Yes.
Christine, I'll make the motion.
All right.
So Mayor and Council, this motion would be directing staff to come back with proposed ordinance of creating new category of shopping center use with multiple tenants to allow them to have indoor and outdoor events up to twenty-four per year, with a sunset date of twelve months from the effective date of ordinance.
Is there, is there a way that we can?
I don't think it qualifies for an urgency ordinance, but we will work as quickly as we can.
Okay, I will call, please.
Of course, what would surprise all favor?
I.
Any of those? Any none, I don't move for it.
You guys can just wait, thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to take maybe a short fifteen minute break, and then we'll come back and we'll. Or I do that, you have agenda item, you have, are you okay with just doing it at the end, or do you want to? Are you okay? After it occurs?
No, this, this is more.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to recess for fifteen minutes, or ten, fifteen, I mean, ten minutes. And we'll be back, all of you can go home. Okay, we're now at the decision package.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, we'll begin the final section of tonight's workshop, decision packages. During this portion of the workshop, staff has prepared various decision packages with suggested funding sources for the council's consideration. These decision packages consist of requests from the council, the commission, the community, and staff. As part of tonight's discussion, the council and community may propose additional decision packages for the council's consideration. At the end of this section, staff hopes to receive clear direction on the status of each of the proposed decision packages, as well as any new decision packages. So if I'll follow the format we did last year, which you prefer me to present all the decision packages at one time, and then you ask questions and have discussions, so I will do that. Next slide, please. So the first category of decision packages is proposed to be funded from our general fund special project funding source. So this is separate from the general fund, you have about two million dollars in this bucket of money to be spent. And we are recommending a majority of one-time projects for these, for this funding. And number one on your list is through the administration department. This is our anti-prostitution, anti-human trafficking campaign, Safe Streets Together, that we'd like to kick off this July. We are requesting seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this campaign. Number two is from the community development department. I mentioned this earlier in the presentation, that the state has mandated every city have permitting software in place. So this is the mandate, this is the only item on your list tonight that you must do. We are requesting three hundred thousand dollars for this stuff. This is also where the forty thousand dollar grant, uh, grant fund that we got for solar permitting will be combined with these funds. Number three is from the finance department, this is for an ERP system, we actually requested this last year. And during our search process last year, we thought our current vendor, Springbrook, had a solution that would work. So we actually reallocated this money at the mid-year. Upon further discussion with not the salespeople, but the technical people who actually know what they're talking about, we realized that the Springbrook solution would not be sufficient for our purposes. So we will be going back out to market. We are requesting the same amount that we've requested last year, which is three hundred thousand dollars. Number four is from the public safety department. Last year, the council approved the addition of ten blue light cameras, extending them along the beach from the city of Anaheim. These have been very successful and very inexpensive for the city. There are the one-time costs to the city to purchase the cameras, to install them, and then a five hundred dollar a year maintenance for software. But everything else, the city of Anaheim hosts, gives us access to all of our users. And so we would like to expand that program, we have gotten requests from both residences and businesses. And if expanded, staff would work with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, as well as our own public safety department, to identify the additional spots that would provide the most value. Number five is also from public safety, this is the funding of the North Orange County Public Safety Collaborative Navigation Center. So as you know, we partner with eleven other cities to co-fund the two navigation centers in the cities of one apart, Placentia. We know that just as everything, operational costs are continuing to increase, they rely a lot on staff, so as minimum wage increases, their personnel costs are increasing. This year, we did have to subsidize our SB two monies to complete the required payments that we are contractually obligated by the MOB we entered into. We are anticipating reduced SB two funds next year as well, and are requesting a hundred thousand dollars to help make up whatever that difference is. The Placentia Navigation Center was given notice by PAF that they would no longer provide services. So they did go out to RFP, they received two proposals, one from our existing provider at one of our, Marcy House, and one from the Salvation Army. Both those proposals came in higher than what like mine costs are. That wasn't surprising, so. And the final one on this list is number six from the public works department. This is to fund a capital, to put monies into our existing capital in prison reserve. As you know, we have a large number of park projects going on this year. And just based on what we're observing in our other projects, as well as neighboring cities in terms of construction costs related to park projects, everything is continuing to increase. We want to be able to deliver these park projects as we were initially envisioned and designed, so we would like to make sure we have that listed on hand in case of any cost overruns. Next slide. The next bucket of decision packages is coming from alternative funding sources, again, not touching the general fund in any way. Number one on this list is from the community development department, I already mentioned this, this is a forty thousand dollar grant that we were already awarded, so this is, this was just more for transparency. We will be putting that towards the permitting software program. Number two is also from community development, it's the general plan update. So as part of the developer permit fees, a percentage of those fees go into a fund to accumulate monies for general plan updates. So this is required by the state on a regular basis, if you don't make certain number of updates, then you have to do this whole big project. So it's about time for us to do so, and again, we have the monies already saved up. Number three and four are from community services. Number three is a passenger van for senior transportation programs, you've heard how popular our senior excursions are. And currently, we either rely on kind of our regular passenger van, which does not have any accommodations for mobility, mobility challenged seniors, where sometimes we rent special coaches. But we would like to use monies from our senior mobility program and our fleet maintenance program to purchase our own van, which would have a wheelchair lift as well. Number four from community services, you've heard me talk about the tennis court renovation earlier tonight, we have applied multiple times for various grant funding opportunities. We've been told by our representatives at Townsend Public Affairs, for some reason, right now, tennis courts are not hot. They are not the it thing, and so they don't really get a lot of grant funding. Our tennis courts are very well-used, and we have a lot of people who, within our community and outside, who come to use them, they have not been renovated in about twenty years. So it certainly is appropriate for us to spend some funds to update them. We do have public benefit fees from developer agreements that we've accumulated over time, and using them for an amenity at a park is an allowable use. We would also recommend if the council approved the upgrade to the tennis courts, that we re-scribe at this time to accommodate pickleball as well. Number five is from public safety, this is a flock camera system. So as you know, we continue to have block cameras, which have license plate recognition software within the city. Um, we are currently using state cops grant funds that we have had in reserve. We use those state cops grant funds currently to subsidize our Orange County Sheriff's Department contract payments. But we did have some amounts kept in reserve from prior years. We are, we are working our way through those funds, at this rate, we probably have enough to fund for three to four more years. Number five, or sorry, number six is public works. This is part of the phase one of the branding implementation. We know that the council has previously set aside a hundred thousand dollars for street sign improvements. We are holding off on that until the branding was completed. Uh, so you have thirty-five hundred street signs in town and then you have sixty-eight traffic signal street signs. These are estimates, we actually haven't gone out to market, so the cost may vary. But based on our estimates, we are requesting five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And you do have public benefit fees from developer agreements, these are different from your other fees that are being used for the tennis court. And we would, we, we could take direction from the council, do you want us to do an overall, replace every single street sign in the city right now with our new brand name? Or do you want us to replace them over multi-years, starting with those that are most in need of replacement? So that's something we can discuss when we get to the discussion period. Number seven is capital, putting more monies into the capital improvement reserve. This is now from the beautification fees bucket from developer agreements. Same use, we would want to set aside reserves so we can make sure to deliver all our existing park programs that are on the schedule as designed and envisioned. Next slide please. The final bucket of funding for decision packages is from the general fund. And we actually, as Michelle pointed out at the beginning of the presentation, are bringing the council a surplus this year. That's revenues over expenditures of the amount of one point one million dollars. So of that one point one million, we are requesting approximately your consideration for six hundred thousand dollars worth of funding. Uh, this is the same strategy the council used last year, we didn't use every last dollar of the surplus. We held some of that back so that throughout the year, as new unforeseen challenges or opportunities came up, we were able to reallocate some of those funds. So I'll go through these, uh, item by item, starting with number one. This is from the city council, the council chambers audio upgrade. So as part of this discussion, we have issued an RFP, we have received five responses back. We are checking references now, we've conducted interviews and we are narrowing down the proposals. So this was for audio only, and this would replace all of our existing mics on the dais, it would replace the microphone at the podium, at the staff desk. And the solutions varied a little, but I think the front runner solution actually brings in some software applications that makes management of the meeting better, we would actually remove the D-ten and also still be able to have a better experience with the end user at home. All of the proposals came in about the same price range, there was a little bit of a range, but we believe that eighty-five thousand dollars would cover whichever vendor we end up choosing. Number two is from administration, specifically the HR division. This is for an employee quota of five percent for all full-time classification and two percent for certain part-time classification. Uh, as you know, we are, we continue to strive to keep pace with the market. Uh, when we had some years where our funding was less stable, we did not issue employees' quotas. We are continuing to strive to maintain our marketplace and ensure that our employees have a good living wage. The reason for the reduction for certain, certain part-time classifications is because the state had minimum wage laws. Those classifications actually enjoy a sixteen percent increase over the last five years that the rest of our classifications did not get. So we are recommending that those classifications that are already sixteen percent ahead get the two percent quota this year while the remaining full-time classifications receive five percent. Number three is also from administration, HR, salary market adjustments for seven classifications. So just as I did last year, I do a compensation, HR does a compensation study for me, I review all of the classifications. And for those that are falling a little bit too far out of market, where we need to make minor adjustments, I make those recommendations to council. Here, I am making that recommendation for all the department director positions, as well as the planning manager position and the HR manager. Number four out of the admin department, city clerks, oh, I'm sorry, okay, so number four, I believe, helps member venue ask to remove that consideration. Number five, out of admin on behalf of the city council, request for a senior assessment survey slash plan. Uh, and, and we will let council members for a second discussion portion to talk more in depth about what the existing is and accomplish with that plan. Item number six through ten is from community services. These are, the majority of these are from the community services commission. Number six is a PA system at Stanton Central Park. Number seven is security cameras at Stanton Central Park. Uh, number eight is from staff, this is to continue the special event that the council provided funding for this current fiscal year. These are all the new events that we provided funding for, now we use our lovely brochure. We will absolutely try and go out and get the same level of sponsorship that we got this year, we were actually very successful in getting sponsor, sponsorships. So we will still try to do that, so if any of those funds that were, or any of those programs were able to get sponsorships for, we would return those funds to the general fund for other uses. Number nine is for supplemental lighting at Stanton Central Park, solar specifically. We are issuing an RFP right now for companies to come out and do those assessments. So we are including all of our parks in that assessment program as well. Uh, number ten is branding implementation part two. This is for more of the smaller items administratively and just, uh, for being outward based into the community. So these were things like business cards, um, this with letterhead, council clothing, our employee uniforms, decal on our city vehicles, those types of things. Uh, and number eleven, we would like to try a pilot program to issue cell phone stipends to our public safety code enforcement officers. They currently are using their personal cell phones at willingly, we are not forcing them to do so, but they are using their personal cell phones for work-related communications. Uh, currently with public works, we issue city-issued cell phones. We have heard some feedback that it is not always the most preferred option for employees to have carrying two phones around, especially where, when they're out in the field. So we wanted to try a pilot program with the code enforcement officers, if that goes well, we can offer to other employees who now we have city-issued cell phones. If the council approves this, we would develop a, um, cell phone stipend policy. And all employees who receive a stipend would have to sign basically acknowledging that if you use yours personal cell phone for any city business, it does become open to the public records act request. So any communications you do outside of city email, because we have access to all your city email, no matter what device you utilize, but if you used it, used text or some other messaging type app, you would have to turn over your phone and if you got a public records act request, you would have to make, uh, you would review that and whatever was open for submission, we would have to comply. So that brings your total requested in decision packages to just over six hundred thousand. So that is the end of all decision packages that staff has prepared for your review tonight. Certainly tonight during the discussion, if other items are brought up, we can add this for consideration as well. Um, whatever the council's question, we can go back to the first slide, we can ask questions, we can move around slides so that you can leave.
Before we do that, is there, uh, do anybody, if you would like to address the council's question?
I have, um, um, when you asked for a band, you see, I'm around. Has anybody talked to OC T A about their OC ride program? And you have to be having a great time.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, for talking. We have, um, if, if I'm, if I'm understanding, is it for, to use their services for this, to contract out or? Or is it for, um, there's also another program where they give us old access vehicles that we can, that we can purchase from them? But logistically, we haven't found a way to make it work, is there a type of license required for our staff to have?
The one thing I was thinking of is my mom was really rehabilitated, she's in a wheelchair and really messed up. And I would call OC Ride, they would pick her up, take her to where she needed to go. And so those vans that they have for OC Ride are outfitted or the worst handicap there are. And so what I was thinking is, depending on how many of those vans they have, what schedules they have, um, maybe we can talk to them about using them for OC transportation.
We definitely partner with Access, which is, I think, the, just the different term that they call OC right now. So we do have seniors that one-on-one go to them directly or our staff refers them. Um, and then we also have, we partnered with a nonprofit called Abazard that provides that same service. So if we can't provide it, this is more for, um, there's extreme situations like you, like you described, and they'll take them, whether it's a medical trip, uh, anywhere. This is more so to pick up, uh, in the mornings from their home, there are seniors that want to come, get activities, enjoy lunch. On occasion, we do local excursions to, you know, Ross, Uperlass, other things like that. So that, that's what this is for, in terms of.
And then the only other thing I wanted to mention was on, um, I spoke to Anna earlier today about bridge repair.
Right.
And, um, John mentioned to me today that people are always talking and complaining about that bridge being non-functional on, on Facebook. So if, even if we don't build this bridge, if the other one that's slated to be part of the project, we make that where that would be like, if, I think, it's kind of the twits in between. If we make that an early part of the project, we could also be allowing undesirables access to our, our construction site, you know, seal all the copper wire and everything else they want.
So, um, two points, one, I would not recommend making that an early part of the project exactly for the reasons you bring out. There would be significant safety concerns if the project was not completed. And that would be exposing us to a lot of risk and liability and then we might not. Two, we are continuing to seek external funding sources for that bridge. So the two options that I shared, one is we have asked Congressman Correa for a federal earmark for five hundred thousand dollars to support the reconstruction of that bridge. Just, if anybody doesn't know, that bridge was hit by a drunk driver, he didn't have insurance, there's no one for us to subjugate against. And we have clarified that the city, though, those bridges initially were the county's permission, we did full county permits for those, they are our responsibility. The second option is, as the council knows, we never, we received monies from, um, federal earmarks related to Congressman Lowenthal, related to Orangewood, what we've converted to Orangewood Street Common. So we are actually working with that funding agency to see if they will, and it sounds like they're amenable to it, but they also, this is a decision by the council, if they would be amenable to us adding the scope to our existing scope of services to repair that bridge. So five hundred thousand dollars, we're about there, whatever it costs ultimately, to repair that bridge would be removed from the scope of services for the Orangewood Street Common project. So we are continuing to seek other funding sources. Um, but I, I understand the frustration of the individuals who are used to having that. I will say that we, we have also heard from two residents in the neighborhood, one who purports to speak for their neighbors as well. Zenya has reached out to offer, hey, if you have issues not having to be able to access to the shortcut to get to grocery shopping or the library, we were willing to coordinate a rides for them on a regular basis or even have the city ban go out on a set schedule. But we didn't hear any further feedback when we reached out to them. So I understand that they may be raising concerns, but, and, and maybe if that Facebook page is another way to get them engaged, we were trying to work with them for obviously, um, solutions that don't cost five hundred thousand dollars, but still, but still get them that accessibility until the sports park gets open and they have access to that other bridge.
Okay. Oh, oh, I was gonna say, um, safety issue that grid, that it's really long exit from that old neighborhood going north. And if something happened on Orangewood, I don't think you could get out of that neighborhood, do you?
Uh, I don't know, I, I.
There's several. Besides just.
There's several, several.
But you can't get out to Peach anyway.
Yeah, you go down to Chatham.
Well, yeah, to Chatham, but I'm just saying, let's say, uh, you have a couple of houses burned on Orangewood. But would the people have any way out of that neighborhood?
Are you saying they would then travel by foot across the bridge?
Yes.
I mean, I think we would have bigger problems without.
Well, it just hasn't seemed like there's that many streets out during the neighborhood before, and there's not that many ways out of that neighborhood.
Well, the street that the FRC's on goes right into the shopping malls.
No, that's, no, that's the side, that's way from the other side of, um, I, Orangewood.
Yeah.
It's just on the other side. But I'm saying if Orangewood was blocked, you can't get out that, you would.
You can't get out.
To the other side.
Yeah, you're not in Peach.
No, I, I mean, Orangewood from Peach to where San Rosal is. If that was closed, you can't get out of the neighborhood on the, on the north side.
Right.
How do you get out? If you're in a car, what if there was some kind of fire, an actual disaster, earthquake? I think that, I think we should work on that bridge, just to get through the school. Where?
Oh, I, yeah, I mean, if there was that, that much of an emergency, we would have opened the field, we could have opened the field. We currently, we currently don't open the field because we had issues with homeless.
Because there's gates that are locked all the time, where'd you get that fifty dollars, where'd you get that cost?
Through public works did inquiries because we have to have structural design and construction function because it's over a swamp.
And now the person that hit that had no insurance.
Correct.
So why are we not having that covered in our insurance?
We did submit it to JPIA and they, they rejected the claim.
The way these are, too, I said they can't do it, then we just updated that.
Usually when they tell us, yes, right now, we don't wish.
That's why we, that's why we have that insurance, because if something happens in our community, now you say that's our revenge and we should have the right to have some kind of, even if we were self-insured, I have to pay some kind of money. I'm not real sure that, I'm not sure that was it.
We can go back and ask them more for their.
Well, they're having their big deal with people.
Well, they, they're still responsive to us, we've been asking them other questions and still reach out and ask.
Well, why don't we have, uh, if that's okay, have our jury, we are, see if we have that covered. I have insurance and it's not covered, where did all this sadness hold over with you?
It depends on the reason, Michelle and I were just reviewing the policy today.
Yeah, same guy drove a car through, and you have any chance?
We would, we would submit our claim after we got our police report and our public works reports to JPIA.
Anyway, I, if you guys don't mind, I, I mean, we're paying a lot of money to people. And I think if we're paying for insurance, we should be able to have an explanation rather than, how do they reply to say, my, my pay?
No, whenever we have issues like this, we get the police report, we submit, we look for segregation. So let me go back, we should have an email chain already. Last year, I.
Then we should turn, H C.
A couple of other questions regarding this slide. Did I mention that the blue light cameras were one-time forty thousand dollars, installed five hundred ongoing for any software?
For all of the cameras, not all. So like this year, you installed ten and it was five hundred dollars and next year with the twenty, it'll also just be five hundred dollars on time.
Okay, and then, um, for the navigation center, the hundred thousand dollars, yes, ongoing, uh, is there any, is housing authority money now or it hasn't?
We, so housing authority money has a limit on what we can spend for homeless efforts. And so we already have that completely expended between our homeless outreach quarters and another homelessness funding item. So we are not leaving a dollar down the hole.
And then, uh, can you do the next slide please?
When we go into the next slide, can I comment on the navigation centers? The proposed budget includes a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of funding for the navigation centers, kind of based on our, um, the trend of what we've had to, um, contribute every year, with the majority of that one seventy being funded by the housing authority. We are limited to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of housing authority funds to fund homeless services efforts. That was a prior city attorney, um, opinion years ago. And then a small portion of that one seventy being the general fund. So because of the cash flow issues at the North Pond Navigation Centers and the rising costs, we're just being prudent in increasing the total contribution from one seventy to two seventy in next year's proposed budget.
And regarding the passenger van that we will be able to make eighty-eight in line with the population, how many? how many people can accommodate in our current van? How many trips are we running in that?
I, I can look up some numbers on like a monthly basis, an annual basis, but we have, it's a fourteen passenger van. And then we do have to remove one row to accommodate any devices, so even walkers or anything like that. Um, so we're doing, yeah, maximum would be twelve per trip. We're averaging, um, I don't know, I can look back, but maybe about eight. And then we do a couple in the evening as well, we have tai chi in the evening classes. So evening staff will also give it to seniors and take them to those classes.
These are all Stan residents?
Hmm.
And the lifespan that we're expecting on the stand?
Uh, we haven't gotten that far, we did specs and got a few quotes on just the accessibility to qualify.
And Michelle, can you, I don't even know if I'm making funds up. Is this senior mobility program funding, funding that we have to use within this time period, or is this ever free?
No, this is that, so I wanted to comment on that too. The seventy-six thousand dollars, um, that is being committed or requested from our senior mobility transportation grant fund, our OCTA grant funds for this program, that we get about forty-six thousand dollars each fiscal year for our transportation, uh, for our senior transportation program. We have about two fiscal years to spend it. If we don't, we can get a one-time extension from OCTA for an additional two years. And if we still don't, we have to return those monies. So this fiscal year, we had about twenty thousand dollars. That was expiring from revenues that we collected, we use the first-in, first-out method. So revenues that we, you know, collected a couple of fiscal years ago that we have not, we aren't able to spend by the end of this fiscal year, um, community services requested a time extension. So that is that. On the life expectancy, I know your current van is really old, so what year is it? And then that may keep them on a few.
Well, I think we keep our, all of our equipment, whether it's our fleet, whether it's.
Till it die.
Till it dies. So I mean, in an ideal world, I would say something that's used to transport seniors and anticipated heavy use with a lowly challenge would be five to seven years. But we use our stuff until it breaks down and it becomes not cost-effective to repair it.
If I may, um, some members of the board spare, I say we go ahead and pass this slide since it's not the general fund. General fund. I think so, so let's go and just pass this first, then we can discuss the other two years, all right? On the. Right. Should pass that, I motion that we pass the decision that needs to be proposed on this slide.
For the transplating.
Yeah, we're all transplating and then. All right, yeah. Second, by, all in favor?
All right.
To pass that, that slide.
Really?
Yeah. So we have a motion in the second, do you know, all in favor, are you in favor of that?
I did have one. I'm not sure. On the general plan, we do every five years, right?
There's a window that you have to do a certain number of updates to your.
I would be very interested in that because if we can get, um, same people to do it again, they come in, they give you a dog and pony show, and then they, and we take the book, we're about to shut, and there's fifty thousand dollars. I think we should evaluate what we need to make this case of red territory. And, uh, you know, we've done a pretty good job, what we're doing now. And I hate to just, and so they come in, drag us through all that again, ask us what we'd like, and then, yeah, I think if we review what we've done in the past, and then build on that, maybe we don't spend.
So these are funds that are collected off of permits specifically for this, so if we don't use it for that, we can't use it for anything else, and then at a certain point we would be subject to returning to.
It's categorical, but it's not limited.
No, I think it is limited to that, isn't it specifically collected for the general plan and major?
Yeah, it's, um, all of our permits have a general plans or charts that's collected specifically for.
By improvement, by improvement.
So the, the money just stays there and collects until we use it for any work on a general plan, a general.
So we're not losing.
So we're, we're just gonna keep sitting on it until we're ready to move that project.
So we're all losing.
I mean, okay. The money's already sitting there, it's not being used, and we haven't had, we haven't used it.
Yeah, but that's your ever, that's usually good, we haven't.
No, 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 no. Yeah, so the, the general plan, the last update was in two thousand eight, so that, that is a significant amount of times we've had that update. Um, the other item also is that with the housing element update that was recently done, um, based on all the funding decisions come out in the last five or so years, we were required to create a brand new element for the general plan that wasn't done. And we also needed to do an update to our, um, security element. So there are two items, uh, two elements in the general plan that do really need to be done fairly soon because we're out of compliance in those areas. Um, and again, because it's two thousand eight, it would be prudent at this time to just do one more.
With all the new things coming, we would probably be able to use this funding to, to pour those installed.
No, we have a mandate that we have to produce these two elements, and this money would help us meet that mandate.
I understand the mandate, I've talked about content. To me, that whole thing is content. I just wanna make sure that what we're getting is the value to your department, rather than just meaning some regulation.
And I, yeah, I can let you know that everything that we do in, in my department specifically is tied to the general plan. Everything I guess presented to the planning commission, everything that we, that we approve, has to have very specific findings, and we have to decide exactly how it's consistent or in support of the general plan. So with my department in particular, it is, it is a crucial part of what we do on a day.
So just so you know, you're marking that shelf, it's on the right-hand side, it's, it's one with all the best city. Since it's been, what, fourteen years, six? Yes. I've seen a lot of books on the shelf over the years, right here.
Everything on.
The woman? It's dead, I gave my husband.
So that's all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Hearing none, alternative, alternative funding, I have one through seven passes.
Allison.
Thank you, Allison.
If we may, can you go to the next one? I, I'm sorry for blocking that off, but I, I don't, I don't know five at this time. Um, I prefer to help me that out, I know that I'll see my boss or something. And I don't wanna spend fifty thousand dollars and figure out what others is. So I said, you can count on number five, and you better use that money that you're applying.
So, um, the claim of having the surveys, um, we're gonna need our current population, but also the future population. That is for the national issue of time, and that's something we're gonna be active in the survey. Complain for our interest in the population. Seeing that it's such a long road ahead of us, um, it's not something I have to remember this year, because it's this year, but it's something we would have to analyze our interest in the population.
You don't feel that's even out?
And all I can do is get a hundred percent on that. But right now, I'd rather spend my eight on program. Because I think that, I mean, with that kind of money, just for the program. And you know, the seniors right now are very happy. I know if you had a chance, but they're very happy with the programs that we offer. I actually have never heard a fight about any of those. In the future though, we don't have more guys like you who are probably run.
What the hell? Well, it's in the poll, so let's see, we'll raise the poll.
A pickleball.
Uh, then what they're asking me?
Uh, before I go on, I was asking Jim, he talked a little about benefits from the navigation center. I mean, right now, we're trying to get the state to give local money to us, so we can do our programming and all this and that.
So just to clarify, are you asking for the Hope Center or the Navigation Center?
Number five.
Oh, no, no, one, okay, Navigation Center.
I think we're in O C P S C, Navigation. I know that a group of users are, um, uh, hotel, that we have to have some insurance.
So we entered into an MOU with the other North Spa cities, so we are, um, we are committed until the term of that MOU, and I think it goes for three more years, I would have to double check that. So we are committed, and in that MOU, it envisioned the potential that we're facing right now, which is that if S B two funds do not cover your city's contribution amount towards the, um, operations, that you do have to come up with it some other way. So in terms of the benefits, um, I'll start and then Jim can fill in. So there are beds, obviously, at both navigation centers. They are only available to North Spa individuals. So you have to have some type of tie, either a former, um, home address in one of the North Spa cities, or you went to a high school in one of the North Spa cities, but something that shows you have a connection. I will say that in reality, how they are working, I don't think anybody could have predicted. They were intended to be navigation centers, meaning short-term stays to prepare individuals to move on to either permanent supportive housing or affordable housing. Because the pipeline is impacted, we have individuals who have stayed at these navigation centers for more than a year. And so they are de facto operating as permanent supportive housing right now until that pipeline opens up and we're able to place them into other units. Um, it, it's been a source of frustration for all of the cities, but nobody could have predicted it. It's not like anybody wants that to happen, but at the same time, our service providers have asked us, what do you want us to do? When the ninety days comes up, do you just want us to dump everybody back on the street? And certainly, we don't want that, right? So, so it's a difficult decision for everyone to make. There, there is value in it, it's a little bit alarming how quickly the operational costs are increasing. Um, we are, as a group, trying to revisit the formula whereby we each pay a certain percentage. So we are in a better position now because we have our project home key and because that is a pipeline for some of these individuals in the navigation center. So we are getting credit for that on our formula. Um, and then Jim can speak to how our homeless outreach coordinators connect with the resources there.
So, and who we, what the city man said, I think this is a key component. Uh, the vast majority of the places referenced by our outreach coordinator, uh, earlier are through the navigation center particularly. So obviously not, not ideal, uh, I, in terms of operation, I would love to have, uh, the beds be more available on a regular basis. However, this is a, to our process that has been set up where it's supposed to be first stop off, so we do use it.
Yeah. Can you go to Michelle, or I should, how many people are there?
I wanna see, it's almost three hundred, like one.
I think totally it was in the twos.
What kind of rate of what? That's only one of them. Um, they have to come up with a new bed, so it doesn't seem like they, like, young people pass away. Do they move to someplace else? Do they get a bus ticket to the north?
I would, if, the, uh, what I have learned in this world is, it's every situation, I mean, obviously. Unfortunately, some folks pass away, some are decent enough, plunk out, or, or leave on their own.
I mean, a couple of them, in Stan Park, that went down because they got high, they both got killed.
The both navigation centers have policies whereby we violate, and, and they are, they have lower barriers, but they're not no barrier, they have lower barriers, but if you do violate one of their stated policies, you are not allowed to return to that navigation center, but you can go to the other navigation centers. And have a second chance. There are individuals who could be banned on boat based on prior activity, and they cannot come by for one.
With the high numbers now, now we talk to other navigations.
We, we did, and the costs to participate in that are extremely high. I mean, it, it would, so Orange is talking about creating a new center, and they're trying to ask.
What was opening?
So, um, I thought it was Westminster, Westminster is down in Huntington Beach, are partnering.
Garden Road.
Oh, is it Garden Road, Garden Road, down in Huntington Beach, there is an opening next month, but that is only for Central Spa, just like those are only for Front Spa. So we have talked, so again, Orange is trying to look at opening one, and they're coming to the North Spa cities and asking, will you help us fund it? But that's a, that's a big decision, and I will say that Home Aid, I think somebody who's supported the Home Aid came and asked the North Spa cities for funding, and he said, we can't afford that. We're struggling to fund our own navigation or two that we have, it's just really difficult.
Despite the fact that there aren't necessarily as many beds as we, we would like, I don't think that another full center would be wise just due to the, um, high percentage of service-resistant individuals. Although it would be convenient to be able to have a, a number of beds wide open every day. Uh, the outreach coordinators work, work very hard to retain them. Um, sometimes it's a few days wait, but at the same time, those who are seeking shelter are typically accommodated. The break in the system that we are currently seeing is that individuals are unwilling to go to shelters, and they're simply waiting for permanent supportive housing. So that's between that and the overall service resistance, I will have.
I think if you like, produce a security like the, um, in the park shop, which is a pretty bad building, I mean, it's.
Well, one of our are just saying that the bad building is not the way to go when you're running into people. She's, they're, they're gonna come back and ask for monies to renovate their existing facility.
I think we should just.
What we have to do, we're, we're actually obligated.
Go ahead, Alex.
Little bit of a tangent, I, I did get a, I have a great pleasure of visiting, which I bring her last week. And what my conversation with them made me realize that they have at least thirty beds they don't want to alter. So if, they're not even asking for capacity, because the issue is not, you don't have them shelter beds. Where do the folks who are in the shelter for so many, twenty months, what do they go next? So don't invest my, build navigation centers, and we've already done more than our part to act from this point, housing for this area. So I think it's really incumbent on other cities, neighboring cities to do their part. Uh, I don't think we can put another dollar, pay one month for shit.
Why?
Because we have three home key projects in our city.
That was a good one.
We did fund a bit.
Part of it, but not.
No, I think it was like eight million dollars. We did, we put a lot of money, right?
That's about me.
Yeah, that covers, honestly, that would have come from our city, but where are the other cities? I say we go ahead and, but I can get it, right?
Well, the other, let me interject. If we, um, if we have sixteen hundred contacts, and we only get a hundred people, that means about a hundred people to fill a hundred thousand. Now. I'm glad, that's what the policy is. Let's inform, and besides, they don't stay there. Do I go ahead and have a good meal, shower, and then back down the street again, and pure beach, or blue moon? So if we were to use our vouchers, we would have to provide services, right? It's not just a voucher, if you have right here.
I think when you reference voucher, are you referring to a, a motel voucher or? So motel vouchers, A, we don't do, uh, when we do utilize hotels, it's typically to bridge the individual in advance of placement. Um, there are scenarios where we're helping a person through the process of services, and they're on the street, for instance, first thing in the morning, they have a mental health evaluation. We'll make that determination that to try to prepare them for that, we will help them with a motel, but, um, that, that's, the, no wraparound services are provided through our Virginia motel. But your point related to the service resistance, um, it is entirely, yeah.
If you're really gonna use that hundred thousand dollars, give it to our turn, she gives us a combination of that. I mean, that's, it's not like, I mean, that's a, a.
So we, uh.
Maybe you're.
Clear.
Well, would that be a hundred thousand dollars?
There's not, there's no quota of visiting.
How many reactive serve, a year?
Or a day, or a year, I, I can get, I don't wanna throw it over. We, we do have bodies there right now, I would ask. For a day, for a year? I, I can get, I don't wanna throw it over. We, we do have bodies there right now. I would estimate seven to nine of ours right now. But it, it fluctuates just the nature of those facilities. Obviously, the best case scenario, they cycle through that to whatever that next step may be. But we, we do use that rate. I would prefer that. The grid, bridges was, or bridges and then the essential navigation center. Had more availability and then hopefully we'll move towards that with the, the operator will do a better job of making this better.
No, the, the county system can place bridges, we cannot. The county. The county.
They don't, my mistake, they don't have a mental health treatment capacity.
In the county case, how hard are people in some of the bridges?
We are able, there's, there's methods that through the folks that are smarter than I am, the outreach coordinators, where we are able to utilize bridges in very specific instances. It's typically. How the contacts with the local system originate. So if there's an individual that starts out through more of the general county process. We're able to essentially realign them and give them into bridges. But it is, we're the ones that we are directly affiliated with our section.
I, I say we up heard this. It is. Right, we're, we're not sure, so we wanted to. A hundred thousand dollars, sorry, Carol, I updated this line. Yeah, I'm sorry. So it's a hundred thousand dollars that we're asking the whole. And you mean until we get the actual employees and bring it back to you so you guys. So we have to pay regardless. We're actually obligated. Okay, my motion approved. Item one through six. I present a motion by council member Van, accepted by council member Torres to approve items one through six for general funds, special projects. All in favor? Any votes? I have a question regarding item number. My impression is that even though we have the price at thirty seven thousand, the reality is a lot of. Organization. What is the actual cost that, that we have to defer this year for the events like, you know, Paint the Town, State of the City. Things like that. How much did we actually do?
Thank you, Mr. Kiltor. So the numbers that I put here were the actual costs. So we did get supplemental funding and then returned some allocated money to the general fund. So what we requested was our best estimate of what we ended up spending. So for Paint the Town, it came up to around three, ten thousand. The painting, we're expecting the three thousand. The only one that's, we haven't completed yet is cases Stanton, still exploring a few options.
But I think Zania, but for like State of the City, we had. And Paint, Paint the Town, did we have full funding for that too?
So we ended up, we got a six thousand dollar allocation to council and then we ended up getting about ten thousand sponsorship. And that, that was also from cannabis, from some public beneficiaries and then sponsors directly for the event.
So you're saying that it did cost, we got ten thousand dollars worth of alternative funding and it cost us ten thousand. Correct. So even though, even if, let's say we pass that, we don't actually expect to lose all thirty seven thousand.
Hopefully not. I think overall, we, I can come back with the exact sponsorship we received for each event, but we did supplement almost each event this year.
All right.
We're taking a motion to remove four and five, right? I make a motion. We need to go to. I think five is fine. We'll, we'll have options for, you know, because I, I'd rather do salary adjustments, keep the people.
Right, it won't be a cost for.
My understanding is that the high percentage for all full-time employees, two percent for part-time employees, we have seven salary adjustments.
Certain part-time.
Certain part-time, certain part-time employees, we have seven salary adjustments.
Yes, we're talking about.
And, and you're saying we go seven percent for all?
Yes, that would be great. I think that this year. Really, the time I go to the event, I'm going to shop at the. You know, giving, giving our workers a little bit of a, of a higher raise than.
I, I'd be more in favor of being very specific about who we increase salaries for as needed, given the money. I do trust. Yeah, and I think that, you know, if, if we feel like we're having a hard time retaining certain people or attracting certain candidates for open positions. Then we can make money available to make adjustments so that we can be competitive. But I think if we do it across the board, seven percent. I don't, I don't think that's necessary.
I mean, honestly, I think our, our workers in general in brackets are. So anything we're catching up. So I mean, all I see are benefits from this. It's not like we're gonna be losing money. This is an investment.
The thing on that is that our retention is not a problem.
Well, the other, we just got our work. The other thing too is, is that I think we have a. We, we did a pretty healthy raise the last time we did this and we did get a lot of. And then the other thing along those lines too is, is that. We don't know what's gonna happen. Everything, the economy. Wait, no matter who you are, what you are, you know, things are unsettled right now. And I think that if, I mean, it doesn't mean we can't make an adjustment. We can make a bigger adjustment. But I think it's better for us to be a little more cautious right now. And then as we see, as things develop and unfold. Then we can move forward.
So, so my issue right now is that we're one of the most financially stable cities in Orange County and talking about being especially. Sure, but I think that that should take percent is in, you know, a huge amount of difference in money. I hope that that actual two percent is a lot. You will operate nursing care.
No, I agree. I think you're making a big mistake trying to get into the weeds of this. We don't supervise the, we supervise Hannah. We have to trust Hannah.
Right, and Hannah is. And there's nothing wrong with the council going in and.
You did that last year, you're right.
If I may, what would, how much more would it cost if you did two percent? Addition two percent. Each percentage is fifteen thousand dollars. So an extra hundred thousand dollars, we were just fighting over a hundred thousand dollars for the navigation center. You know, like, we wouldn't have to think about that. We had an extra hundred thousand dollars. But I think there are options to cost that the city incur. Don't put on careful about dollars. So we gotta think about how much, how much is it really gonna cost?
Well, it's human. I mean, every year.
I just see you. Right, I, I just think that there's. Actually two percent. I just don't see what's. I know we have. Seems like when it comes to this subject specifically, where are you?
I was there, you know, the recession, three rounds of layoffs, had to let go some really good people because we couldn't afford it. And I don't wanna face that again. I mean, I might not be here, but I mean, I don't want anybody to have to face that again. And the thing is, is that. This, this pulls up the people that needs to be pulled up, gives everybody else a bit. And the thing is, if we do seven percent this year, what are we supposed to do next year? Nine? You know, you don't.
Wait, 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 that's a slippery slope. Just because I'm gonna give this. About it, doesn't mean it's automatically gonna like turn into a steep wall back and have like a hundred percent.
It would be really hard to take seven percent down next year.
I mean, we did seven percent in the past and then a year after that, we did a five percent. Right, so then what's the issue? It's just two extra potential for our workers.
Can I? So first off, I so appreciate all the council. Very appreciative of staff. We do have an amazing staff. I think when you heard from them this evening about their department pushman, you look at how many people are physically in each department. By all productivity of lunch fingers. So thank you for that. It's been, having this conversation means a lot to employees listening to it. I do wanna clarify one thing. It's semantics, but I need to clarify it. When we make adjustments. Or my compensation philosophy, I'll say that my compensation philosophy is not based on retaining. As great as our employees are, it is based on market position for that classification. So I don't ever want an employee to think that I picked salary market adjustments because I liked that person. Or I thought that person was doing a great job. It is completely objective, scientific. I've looked at where they are in the market and I think. Position is vacant, could I compete with another city that happens? So I just wanna make that very clear to any employees. It's not based, it doesn't matter who's sitting in the mission. So, and then my last point that I just wanted to offer again, I so appreciate this conversation. I'm always gonna have to make fun of boys. You know, Donald, I appreciate that you're probably looking at the remaining surplus and thinking maybe have some cushion there. And I also hear what you're. Saying about holds on ongoing costs. Now, if the council really feels strongly that, hey, employees performed great this year. Got a surplus, understand Hannah and Michelle were really conservative in their projections, so there's buying in a little education. They want to consider a one-time bonus. That would be one time. Five percent. Do a five hundred dollars, seven hundred and fifty dollar, one thousand dollar, one-time bonus. Based on our, like, initial mission today. So just something else for you to consider if, if there is sentiment to show that appreciation, but not lock in forever.
I would not be against the retention bonus at all. I mean, you can also add a, like, how many years are you supposed to be? So I mean.
I, I was just talking about a general, but you guys construct it however you might, if you would like to do it based on. Years of service that you can structure it that way.
Well, I think longevity lunch.
The reason we have services. Or given, or gave, it can go all in one day. I'll give you an example. Skyrocketing. And they continue up because we have a minimum of five or seven of. Though it's wide open for the sheriff's department. We have almost eighteen million dollars.
About fourteen.
We have a.
Well, the, the contract already has one in.
That's right, that's.
That's like consistent everything. I mean, any decision we make up here, we make it up. Right? I mean, at any day we can go. But why is it when it comes to giving them this money, our workers, all of a sudden, we're already talking about our general fund, right? We're already talking about all the, all the increases about me. We're talking about that when we're trying to pass other programs.
Everything, everything.
Of course, but you were talking about the general fund and how it's gonna be raised in the next couple of years when we start.
Yeah, I, I recommend this. I recommend this. Do what has been suggested by both our private departments, state manager. And then we take a look at this and I'm into. And if things are going well, if, if the economy, then we can make that decision. We can do that. You can make a retroactive. I don't care. How can we move it into the way it's printed on? Minus four and five.
Yeah, I'm leaning from.
Okay. Then we need to go on.
Can I just please make one comment about? I just wanted to bring up security cameras at Stanton Central Park. I just wanna be very clear. As, as the council approves that, I just. We need to do a very good job of explaining. We are not gonna have people monitoring these cameras twenty-four seven. It's not even gonna be monitored. Every minute that we have a staff member there, we have good staffing. We are out and about. The camera, I, I don't mean it. Log it right away, but it will be an afterthought. We have others. That's monitoring a camera. I just wanna make it very clear when we'll do so, if the council approves this, very clear signage. There are certain concerns about risk and exposure when you have a camera that the community has certain expectations, that somebody's monitoring and that if something happens. In the vicinity of the camera. So I, I just want everyone's expectations to be clearly set that if we install a camera. There is minimal staff available to actually sit and review. It would probably be used most likely retroactively when we get a report that something happened. That we go back and validate for that camera. So, so that was the only one I wanted to make. Unless the council wanted to. I did, but I wanted to. I, I, I just wanna.
My point is like. Probably the best issue with this would be if we could answer your next thing. Is that a way you can monitor things that happen? You can go back and do rather than using like. We would. It's kind of like if, you know, you have airspace and you have to go back. It's good too because what we can do is if we're not monitoring, let's say someone comes in and analyze the park. Well, you know, replace a lot of that stuff we have in the park. It's very expensive. We may be able to get some things, but the sheriff's department. I think that's more beneficial.
I'll leave it up to the staff to decide what is. And are, are we? Once we put in security cameras as. Say we have cameras or. We don't have to advertise it, but I would want some type of signage. Through the camera, that this, some type of recording, like this camera is not monitored at all times or something so that they know that if something's happening to. I mean, opposite effect. Like, they say there's a camera that they're less likely to do something bad.
I think it's important that you actually having a sign. Does, if you have a sign that says, this is the video camera, wherever, if people are very simple. It also dissuades people from wanting to do their crime because they know that everything they do take. So there's an advantage to having a sign. Plus it also, as she said, gives the public, that them know that, that we are, have the cameras in there. It helps with.
And we can work with other cities who have cameras and get, see what, how, how they find them. And I'm sure no city has somebody who's dedicated to.
Carol, call for the question. I have a first and a second. Hold on, please.
We confirm the first and second. I have one.
Yeah, okay.
So the motion by council, our mayor goes to Lauren, a second by council member Taylor. And this is for a passage to items one, two, three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Does that include four and five? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very high passes.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, that brings us to the end of our budget workshop, we can return to our regularly scheduled agenda.
Okay, we're now at item number ten, which is law communications. Is your honor, the public, would like to address the city council on A item, we did on that. Will you see me on?
Ms. Mayor, we have then.
We are closed for the hearing. Ready communications, we have now mayor, chairman, council, agency, and board initiated business. We'll let Georgia tell us about the, and, and we will want to, uh, read very words.
Our committee report, uh, on the ninth of this month, I had the great pleasure of visiting the Bridge West framework, and I have visited already one of our, and most of the essential shelters, I say Bridge West framework is much. And then they have, I know, they have onsite clinic, they have the rescue room, they have somebody other than that, and he said, no, they have other than these, and I asked the staff, um, what percent they can use. He said, um, on any given day, they probably will not. No, um, you know, that surprised me, because I always thought that means one that's in the beds, like, those one that's part of the, the hardware, the proper beds, taking the beds, and those normal beds, normal beds. So, um, it looks like they, since they're about to, uh, address the, the needs of those who are working services, and at this point, those who are staying there and, um, taking up the bed space, partners needing partners as well. So, what I, what I heard from the first house, that, um, probably going for shelters, because you know, the twenty-five thousand, that we will want on the streets, what we could really do is to make. This work housing and other kinds of permanent housing options available, that, you know, anyone's experience, you know, five hundred shelter space, um, you, that couple. Additionally, the impression I got from them was that, and on that tour, there were another city present, that was Villa Park, because there are homes in the town. But, but my conversations with the two Villa Park council members, that they felt that, um, it wasn't their problem, you know, they're part of the. Obviously, they were graphics, and they probably made us different from ours, um, Boulevard and all sorts of things, but, um, I, I did emphasize to them that, uh, city, we've done one more, we are sharing. I hope that, that's how we continue that unified message, that, um, there, there is a, definitely a new problem, but it's possible, and we're together, we've done one. I'm, I'm here on the board, right, Karen? Representing us.
Your advisor.
You're their advisor, right? Particularly, um, can advocate for more. But they are a very low barrier.
Most of them are downstairs, and not inside, usually they have to outside to use.
And I, I did want to, uh, state that we will have our twenty-first annual Stanton Park show, um, jointly beside the eighteen foundation, as well as the nineteen pole, right outside, uh, Stanton Park from nine AM to two PM. Welcome, I want to come, and then take a look at these amazing cars, um, I expect.
I went to the ACCO meeting, and, um, I heard some interesting news about our city manager. Our former attorney told me that he went to grade school, high school over, and she was as organized in grade school and high school as she is now.
I have to say, every time I heard anyone say anything about our city manager, it's been amazing and fantastic, and I am so grateful to have someone like this, uh, should be, like, help us in this.
Actually, the city manager didn't like her, asked attorney very much, because he was a sober dude, and she didn't think that he'd ever make it through college.
So, B, I'm just. Oh, C? It's just racist. Okay, so, um, there are some deals right up to my attention, and it's, um, development, specifically for our town center specific plan. This is something very basic, and general, that other cities, and we can do, what this would, what this would basically allow us to do is have, continue and save, where in nature, the project that I pop up in our council. So, um, this is something procedural, um, we basically would set minimum standards for redevelopment, and I think that, uh, giving council opportunity to have that, you know, oversee, um, the staff processes and such. So it could be like this, um, whole community benefits, very needed, so, for example, um, if a developer might come in and, you know, just to, for minimum, we would want, we want, we want them to provide. City, like, for example, one of them that I saw was like having a challenge or something, things like that, stand.
So if you're just talking about the town center.
Yes, just, yes, yep, and basically, we would, uh, make it development, and we'd, and we'd have, uh. And that is an example for something, or they would prefer challenges, yes.
My, my impression is that we negotiate with developers, owners, the developers, they've been talking, it's kind of a, a one-off, someone who should make other offers, but, like, see, it's not a charge for doors, and how much this fee is, that is, and it's good if you have. That's the, that can be applied for that specific areas, because we are in many places, and, um, there'll probably be a lot of interest in that area, and then it's clear that the bumpers coming in, that we want quality developers. Want developers that will invest in our community, that are, um, here to make sure we're still positive together, that, that's good, they, um, want to be more, um, set, set standards that are fair, and also that they're. That everyone, that they are competitive, so, you know, it doesn't have to be like a one-on-one negotiation every time, surprise, or whatever.
Do we have standard team? We don't, no. What are our standard team?
Well, at, at our sheer point, development standards are very important, that's why we have development standards, we've already passed this, we have a first rate, a second fee, and we do have development standards. However, at any time, that's why we have a time commission, time commission before they make a resolution, now, just about anything that they want, as far as improvements, you know, anything to bring it up to higher standards. Even above where our basic apartments are, we already have that building system, also, if somebody wants to come in, where it may not be zoned for it, or they have an idea of something that they would like. They can always come in and ask for, uh, you know, they can ask for variance, they can ask the time commission, they can look at it, or they can bring it before the city council. So we have all of those options, it's just that we've spent a lot of time and money, and a lot of input, our, our development standards, um, pressure, that establish those, they.
My understanding, like, for example, uh, the developer, um, KB Homes, her door, that we got from them is very different than just her door charging we got from the, um, and like.
They're different types.
Yeah, they are definitely different, but that was, that was not something that, uh, I think that was something that was negotiated by the.
Or it's.
But it's not standardized, because depending on who they talk to, what the.
Well, it would be depending on the development.
I, yeah, it should be depend on development, but I think if, if we can standardize it somehow, that way it's not a surprise, it doesn't depend on how good a negotiation.
That's what I'm asking, don't we have something that standardizes it now, it can't be just we wake up in the morning where you decide we're gonna do this? It's done, I can't wait, this, um, can you guys, or, Chris, can we, we're, we're, we're. Great, where are we?
Uh, the, the, the process running for the, the development agreements are definitely very, um, project specific, so they, they're with. It makes sense to me that there was a difference between the development agreement that was put in place through the KB project versus the, the BURB of the projects. Um, simply because of the, the density that was included, or the, the different type of makeup and impact that it would have caused. So usually, with something like that, we would take a look at what the impacts of the project, um, are gonna resolve, what the impacts to, you know, increase whole of safety when you're increasing, you know, by a certain density, there's, there's. Giving this, um, that's gonna be more police services, and so that's why those things are going to be in the development agreement. KB, I believe, cost metal was about eight or so units, um, so it's not as big of an impact, so those fees were, were classed just by the ratio level. So that's usually what leads those discussions, and why those fees are.
The number of doors.
The number of units.
Okay.
It's part of that, it's also competitive marketplace, they don't have building standards, and, trust me, garden go will try to undercut us and get them to develop there, I mean, it, it's competitive.
I, I think that standing is right for development, that's what we need, anything of these staff that we look at, what, you know, is sufficient for our economy, but, and, and to base off their discretion, not just some randoms, you know, meaning that we're just assigned upon now, it's. Would be directed staff to go ahead and formalize.
I, I think then what's ability of that could cause some trouble, and we're pretty powerful, last year.
Why, why is it?
Because if we have our standards, and garden grows like, oh, do whatever you want to, we want you here, you know, I mean.
Then I'd rather require better developments, I would rather have some quality for our residents, and honestly, it's not like they're gonna leave to another city, we're, we're ripe for development, we're gonna have to require them to, to have some requirements to take away.
We're pretty powerful, last year, I had, I take a photo out of the development, because I wanted more green space and development. I mean, we had KB Homes redone three or four times, because we didn't like the way it looked, we had the homeless shelter on Beach Boulevard repainted, because it looked like a checkerboard, that's me, we, we're pretty pow- powerful.
So then why can't we start further power and have something that are clearly minimum standards for our residents to tread?
We have that.
We have that, right, so what I'm saying is that we have a very formalized process, because that is specifically, we look at these other hotels, so then knowing and prepared if there are any union issues.
I think these guidelines, I think that's where you will have guidelines, but maybe not necessarily ones that. Self-insured, signs on a harder, for developers, so I think we'll.
The, the spread of, the spread of, one, you could mean, not tonight, what their, um, guidelines are, can, can, um, go forward from there, because they may make sense to tell me completely, but I don't know.
So, yeah, I am aware that other cities have adopted, um, guidelines like the spread of hotel development, so we can start there, we can start there with a survey, what other cities have done, and send that to you. So that's not a lot of work on our part, we're not creating anything new, but we can, uh, survey other cities throughout California, and bring that to you guys, so you can see what is the spectrum of guidelines, requirements, whatever it might be, so we can start there.
The thing is, is that, um, we have development standards, those development standards are, are overseen by two different classes, time commission and city councils. And don't you know, it's quite a challenge to come to a hotel, on Main Street, the beach, they have the ability to do that, because they have to get through time department, and get through the time admission, and signal. So those standards, now let me tell you, back to your point, Alex, what happened with KB Homes, and the fact that we have apartments two and a half feet from Beach Boulevard, by the way, last week, a car went into a house. On the residential street, and, but it was on Main Street, it went right in and killed the guy in bedroom, can you imagine buying one of those apartments on Beach Boulevard, where those things are like this far off the earth? Those are the types of things that we can't let happen, if dollars are going to, we just want to make sure that we have those things covered, and there's some flexibility, and who wants to build what. I agree with you, because we had a couple of people that own properties, they're allowed to settle on flexibility, where they can build their properties on, so I think having this, is this step, and this, that, and so, no worries, Steve. Go ahead. And Alex, your other.
All right, so, um.
Do we have to take?
No, sir, I, I hear that all in favor, we have seats in council. We start by staff, and we bring back your. All right, so, um, I had a Jedi's, uh, requesting a presentation from the OCPA, and I see a couple of those in the audience, waiting for, you know, five hours, um, to, to get to this Jedi, and. I know that when I first joined council, um, about four or five years ago, OCPA did come speak, at the time, I think they had, they were looking for folks to join in, um, and be the first, folks to, to be part of this, uh, power authority. At the time, as a council, we all unanimously agree that this is not fine, um, we didn't want to be the gay gates, and it wasn't clear to us that there would be, uh, a, a direct immediate. Been a few years, and there's been a lot of news about OCPA, and there's been a, a number of changes since they last met, and I think it might be good for us to consider hearing from them again, to see how the, the organization itself is different than it was a few years ago when they first met, and what sort of benefits they can bring to our resident, our city. And maybe give us some real data on, uh, you know, what cities do what part of those, and are making for energy, or options they have, and answer that, access. So that is my request, just the presentation, and.
I, I agree with you, it's time, people are gay, um, as you know, there was a little bit more cost, uh, that people to free the program, so that, as I've said, residents did have a choice, whether they wanted to stay with their, that. We can also get their perspective on how they are financially, there was some issues with that, um, and also there's been some change in leadership, I don't mind looking at, it's one second. Give me a vote. You got it?
City council consensus convene board with, um.
Me.
Really?
No. I give you a notice.
Thank you, Mayor, council, I have no questions.
No items for you, thank you.
Are you awake, T?
I think I'm ready.
You got two minutes.
I'll need a minute forty-five. Uh, good evening, I'm the mayor, city council member and staff, thank you for being here all night, uh, it's my pleasure to provide you the operational report for Orange County Fire Authority for April. Uh, in the month of April, Orange County Fire Authority responded to three hundred and fifty-four incidents within the city limits of Stanton, fourteen being fires, three hundred and forty being EMS or rescue, twenty-four being hazardous condition calls or miscellaneous, for that total of three hundred and seventy-eight. In the unincorporated areas of Stanton, Orange County Fire Authority responded to seventy incidents, two fires, forty-four EMS, zero hazards, or miscellaneous, for the total of forty-six. There was one significant incident, there was a working structural fire on the car, uh, it was on April ninth, at approximately eleven AM in the morning, Orange County Fire Authority received, dispatched and received multiple reports of a structural fire located in ten seven hundred block car in Stanton. Firefighter arrived on scene, confirmed a working structural fire in a single family residence, firefighter made entry, the residents discovered a kitchen fire that had spread. Firefighters made entry, the residents discovered a kitchen fire that had spread to the living quarters of the home. Firefighters extinguished it and checked for extension. One elderly female was treated for smoking violation and transported to nearby Hottville. The cause of the fire was faulty stove ignition and use of an open flame to ignite. Damage to the structure was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and contents was fifty thousand dollars. In the month of April, our safety messages focused on outdoor activities, utilization of two-one-one helpline, and the A B C's water safety, along with barbecue and rail safety. Uh, upcoming events and current events for Orange County Fire Authority that we're, uh, supporting, is the twenty-first annual car show, Stanton Car Show, which is Saturday, May eighteenth. And then we're looking forward to, uh, Stanton's National Night Out, Friday, August ninth. This, uh, concludes the April operational report for Orange County Fire Authority, and I'm available for any questions, thank you.
I think that's the one we had to. One thing, I, this is suggestion, I was on your item, I think if you, uh, let Hannah, I should, I should, I should, that puts specific things, or, or what we have, what we don't have, but even if it's missing, and, and maybe they make their search. Okay, um, see your staff. On behalf of the city, and my city council, we want to thank you, Hannah, and everybody, Patricia, for the great job you did on this presentation that we had tonight. Eighty-eight, probably was in twenty-four, it's closer to. And, uh, so, uh, this is probably one of the best ones we've ever had, so, again, thank you all the time and energy you put into it. I also do a comment, I, I really appreciate you giving the succession people, and the younger people, and other chair to make presentations. It makes them feel more part of what we're doing, it also makes them feel, uh, that your job is important, your end is important, you, so thank you for that, that is very. And now, I'm going to be in trouble, it's almost eleven, so goodnight to all.